Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, July 15th in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Nandebon.
Present.
Council Pro Tim Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell, absent with notice. Councilwoman Cruz, absent. Councilwoman Haines.
Present.
Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Ho.
Here.
We have a quorum, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cruz is absent with notice as well. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the flag. We're up to the communication portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comments during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones and give respect and silence for each speaker. Our first speaker is Marcy- Marcell Turner. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Do you want to address Streets? Someone last name Turner. All right. Our next speaker is Laurel Cook.
My name is Laurel Cook. I live at 22208 Crossford Drive. I've been a citizen of Southfield for 73 years, and I want to talk about the street process. It hasn't been paved in over 30 years, but asphalt. And now I know that every property owner has touched, has been fixing up their houses in some way, so I'm not only talking about the property and value of our street, but the second fold is because of the tar issue that we put down at the end of our street and on the cul-de-sac, it's very dangerous to walk them. We have walkers every day from Lear and other people. We have been walking our street for many, many years, and it's very dangerous to walk with all the tar. And at the end of my driveway, it started dripping, well, not deep, but wide, whole. So every time we back out, taking away that old asphalt. And I'd like to walk the street too, but I have a bad knee, and getting out from my house, so the straight side of the road is very, very dangerous, and I did call the street department with a message. And I just want the city to be aware that it's a dangerous street, especially down to the office, so I don't walk, and it also would improve our whole smaller area of property value. And that's basically what I'm here for.
All right. Thank you. We will address it as well to our Streets and Highway Division as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. It's a delight to be here tonight. I did want to first ask if the council or this collective body has done any background checks on following up with the promise to the residents in Beechwood Acres and the surrounding community about grant funding to help support septic tank connections. Following my speech today, I will be sending out an email, as indicated, with information outlining my concerns, as well as supportive documentation in case law that also supersedes those requests. Secondly, I'd like to say that real leadership sometimes is not the person who has the loudest voice, or the person that wants people to follow them. Sometimes real leadership is just someone who inspires others to simply stand. I am honored that people throughout my community have encouraged me to follow what may be a calling, even though it's not a career interest of mine. I'm here tonight to say thank you to those residents that come up to me while walking, or catch me in the grocery store, or supporting other neighborhoods throughout the community. I am happy to say that I would be delighted to run for city council for 2025, and I want to let them know that I appreciate them urging me and encouraging me to do more for the city, for my community, and get on the other side of the podium for real change. Lastly, I would like to say, has anyone followed up with the community who was having the sewage backup from the last meeting? I know that at that time, we were applauding and celebrating the city being awarded with green space, or a green initiative. It's a little hard to support that when we have so many residents whose basements are filling up with what is brown. It is my hope that this council and this collective body does its due diligence to make all of the residents whole with the infrastructure relative to sewage and water. More needs to be done about that. This is not a request or concern that is new. You have residents and communities with these same concerns and issues spanning to the 90s. We're talking 30 years. It is my hope that you look into this and do more. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
My name is Keith Harris. I am proud to hear my wife say she's going to run for office. For the past few months, I have to say I'm so proud of her. She started this new organization here in the state of Michigan called the African American League of Women Voters. I was really surprised on how fast it jumped off. We forgot to bring the flyers today. But over 550 people, even North Carolina, Virginia, national, we're going. Now, I'm just so proud. We all know, the way to the black family is through what? The black African American woman. When you get the African American woman, you get the whole family. So I'm so glad to see these mothers, mothers, that's going to stick together, make a difference, try to get Obama elected. Now I'm going to talk about a subject that I've always brought up, Dr. Wendy Webster-Jackson. I had a lady who came up here earlier ask me, she said, you know, this lady is very deceptive. She's running up under W. Jackson, trying to get people to believe she's Janet Jackson. I'm very hopefully hoping that this whole board put your vote behind Lenny Taylor, and that you, Janet Jackson, especially come out and give, and expose yourself with Lenny, letting these people know that you are not related to her. I've been knowing this woman for 25 years, and she's an absolutely nut. She ran two elections, lost. We know what she did at Levy Middle School, okay? And as far as a certain person in this auditorium I'm talking about, she was in the courtroom, she's a liar. She did not come until after the verdict was read. You know, I just can't stand people when they come up here and say, I've been here 42 years. I'm 66. My wife is 53. So my wife was 13 years old, 43 years ago. That mean, and she ain't that much older than my wife. That means she couldn't have been older than 16. Let me say this to you, lying seemed to be the greatest thing some of these narcissistic, bipolar people have in this city. I'm saying, residents of Southfield, please wake up. Please wake up. Honesty is everything. Honesty in our elected officials, honesty when you hear somebody talk, it is everything. I'm saying, put your support behind Lenny Taylor. Be very careful dealing with W. Jackson, Wendy Webster-Jackson, Dr. Jackson, whatever she want to do, watch your back with that lady.
Our next speaker is Greg Heeler.
When we lost one pool some years ago, why wasn't there a plan set in place to get ready for two pools? And have a new pool in place? We now make it convenient for you to get liquor, but it's inconvenient for you to go to the swimming pool. You have to go to the old park. And that was primarily done because of Oakland County. Oakland County also gave us a grant for $250,000, which was for seniors and their needs and helping them after COVID. Why wasn't Coastal, Pirate Rewards, AARP, Senior Social asked what did the seniors need? Or what? Is this money being spent on their needs? Or is this money being spent on something that the city used to have done? So why would the seniors use just to get a half million dollars, as opposed to being able to have that money spent on, or programs so they could go to court pretty? Or exhibit more space for them? Or have a spot for them that was even put in the paper? The room that they are now meeting in is entirely too small. They were meeting in this room, but for some reason it was stopped. Do you plan on spending any of that money? Are you planning on rescuing the residents of the city of Southfield from some of this stuff that is going on, especially like your ordinance? There's a lady now who has just got a ticket, who came to you two years ago about her sewer and being trying to tap into the sewer line. It wasn't fixed, it wasn't dug. Now she has another ticket to go to court. But they have dug the hole in her backyard. It's just the city's part that is the hole, the inspection, where was the tap-in line to begin with? So why is she paying a fine, or having to go to court, just like my neighbor did, for a sewer line that's not even there, and it wasn't stopped? This ordinance, these ordinance comes from you, and it needs to be repaid. Why is this rope sitting in front? Is this a way to say that y'all are separate from us? Is this a control method or something? This rope needs to be off. There should be no separation between us and you. There should be nothing that separates you from me. We should be all one. And lastly, I hope that you do look at the seniors.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is Robert John Cox.
I'm good.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tatianisha Felconer.
Good evening. I stay at 18416 Kesh, and my issue is the trees with the storm. During that storm, people are having issues removing trees. Like, I was wondering, was there any type of funding to help the residents of Southfield remove their trees, to repair damages to different vehicles? We've been up here before, me and my husband, and our vehicle got ruined because of a tree that our neighbor had, but obviously she can't afford to tear down a tree. So I just want to know, did they do anything? Are they getting any money for tree removal? That's it.
You may be able, the city unfortunately, even though we tried to get some help, depending on their status, if they reach out to our Human Services Division tomorrow, there may be some options there where they can help, but I don't know what the criteria would be.
Okay. For my neighbor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Because her neighbor's tree is falling on her house.
Correct, but...
Because she can't maintain her property.
Correct. So there, we do have a chore program, we do have some other programs that Human Services does run that can help your neighbor maintain their property, which hopefully will help your property.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ladonna Wyatt.
Hi. Good afternoon, good evening. I live at 21590 Concord. I've been in my home about five, it'll be five years in October, I mean, in August. When I bought my home, I was excited, me and my husband, because he's about to retire. We was never told that our house had a sewage issue. We weren't even in the house 90 days, and my basement flooded. It has flooded probably 10 times since I've been there. I constantly repair it, get it fixed, it rains, it floods again. I mean, I called the people out, we paid $10,000 for them to come do something, and we thought they were, it was going to fix the issue. But they told me it was because of the tree, the city's tree that's in my yard. The tree, the city, I contacted the city numerous of times, they told me that they don't cut down live trees. Last summer, it was a bee problem at that same tree. My husband got stung by a bee. I called the city out, they came. They told me they couldn't cut the tree now, so they shaved all the vines off the tree. So now here it is, a year later, those vines are back up halfway up the tree. So I don't know, I just think, I wouldn't have bought a home if I knew every time it rains, my basement's going to flood. I can't go down in my basement, I have kids that got asthma, and I have to constantly keep cleaning, or getting it cleaned out because of the, I smell the odor. It's not, to me, I don't know if it's just me, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. Then, I live in a subdivision on the corner. The subdivision signs, the bricks are falling apart. There's nobody in the neighborhood to help me maintain it. I try to plant flowers on my side, but the bricks fell apart. Y'all want to build the dog park across the street? I came and complained about that, and they was, I was told that if they had some extra money, they would, you know, discuss it, but no one never got to me. I don't understand how I'm being told that this tree is causing a backup in my house, and nothing can be done. I don't, my husband's about to retire. I'm not going to be able to afford to keep fixing this basement or this flooding because of your tree. I mean, I don't know nothing else to do. Is there anything else? I mean...
Have you, I don't want to use up all your time, but is that, are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'm talking that...
Have you, the last time your basement flooded, have you reported that to our Streets and Highway Division, or Department of Public Works?
I came up here, yes.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, they came out to my home, and they told me they couldn't do anything with the tree. The only thing they done with that tree is shaved the vines because he got stung by the bee.
Okay. At the end of communications, we're going to have our city administrator address the water basement issues.
Okay. What about the bricks, the subdivision signs? Because they don't have a...
That's usually through your homeowners association.
They don't have one. I mean, it's in my yard, they don't have one.
That would be through Community Relations, and we'll have them contact you.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glenda Rhodes.
My name is Glenda Rhodes. I stay at 17338 West Hampton in Southfield, of course. The problem, one of the problems that I have, I have two issues, but my neighbor's going to talk about the other one. The one problem that I have is the pool parties. Is the city doing anything for us in regards to that? We're noticing that a lot of our neighbors, well, I shouldn't say a lot, a few of our neighbors are renting out their pools, and they're having these parties, and they're bringing other people into our neighborhoods. And when they bring these people into our neighborhoods, we have no idea who they are. And this is happening quite a bit. And I'm trying to find out, or see what we can do in our neighborhoods, or has the city, will the city be addressing this? Because we know that they're laundering around, because we see beer cans, bottles, we're, we have an association. We don't want to stop some of our neighbors for having things. We've called the police several times, they, police have came out, and you know, asked them to leave, but we're basically trying to keep good neighbors in our area that have been here for 30 something odd years. We're an old subdivision, we have recently became historic, and so we're trying to keep this going. We want to make sure we have more neighbors to stay in Southfield instead of leaving. So my question to you all is, is there anything that we can do to, or is the council doing anything, or Southfield doing anything that can have something done about this, with these pool parties approaching the neighborhoods?
I don't know if this falls under our Airbnb or rental ordinance, but it's something that we can look into, and Councilwoman Ho is the chairperson of our Neighborhood Services Committee, and I think this will be addressed at their next meeting.
I'll reach out to her directly. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Iva Williams.
Good evening. I'm Iva Williams. My address is 17364 Westover Road. The members of Northland Gardens and Melrose Association have great concern about the empty property on 8 Mile leading into Rutland Drive that's just been sold to DTE. We came into knowledge of this at our recent association meeting. We're quite disappointed that we didn't know ahead of time, because we have tried to stay connected with the city with the intent of that vacant property. So what we're asking this evening, and we'd like to go on record, soliciting the help of the council, or whomever we should be speaking with, to be involved in what DTE plans to do with that property. And so I guess we're, we are asking, how do we become involved with that planning?
You would, the city planner, I'm assuming, would have to, the DT would have to submit plans, and the Planning Department would deal with all the regulations and restrictions.
Can the, can the council answer what that, what DTE is doing with that property this evening?
Through the chair, they haven't submitted anything yet, and if they do, we will notify the neighborhood, everyone within 350 feet, as well as the Neighborhood Association.
And how will that communication come to us?
It'll be sent out certified mail.
Okay.
And we'll also be sending it to the homeowners association, but nothing's been submitted to our office as of yet.
Okay. And you're the...
I'm the city planner.
Okay.
So if and when they plan to move forward, they'll submit an application, and we'll have to, we'll take them through the Planning Commission and City Council process.
Thank you so much for carrying our concerns.
Our next speaker is Steve Sota. Are you, are you here for a specific site plan? Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is... Yes?
There, I've been informed that there are some residents that got notified about possibly rezoning on 8 and 1/2 Mile. That was postponed at the Planning Commission level, and it'll be coming back to Planning Commission on the 24th. But the notices had to be sent out prior to the Planning Commission meeting, so there will be no hearing or discussion on that item tonight at city council. And I know there was a few members in the audience that may have been here for that particular item. It's not on our agenda, and it'll be coming back to Planning Commission on July 24th for further discussion.
Thank you. So if anyone is here for that planning notice about 8 and 1/2 Mile road work that will be postponed until when?
Well, it's coming back to Planning Commission on July 24th, and if they make a recommendation that night, then it'll likely come back to council in August.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our last speaker is Pamela Gerald.
And good evening to everyone in the auditorium. I want to thank the speaker for all of the amazing compliments that he gave me. I have a 40, almost 42-year history with this city. I don't even look like what I've gone through, but I know good and well I don't look like my age. So thank you for that compliment. My spirit is young, I have an amazing husband that treats me like a queen, and I guess when you're happy, and when you're in love, it can rub off on you and do some positive things to your appearance. I just want to say to the residents, you know your city. You know the people that have been advocating in your city for many, many years, and all you have to do is go back to those old council meetings, and you'll see how long I've been here. I've never ran for office. I don't feel that I need to run for city council to be an effective person in a community that I've lived in and I pay taxes in. You're entitled to your own opinion, but not your own set of facts. And when you get up here, talking about leadership, when you get up here and you say things that are not true, that is not an example of good leadership skills. And a good leader won't say something that they absolutely, unequivocally, without a doubt know that it's not true. Listen to what people say, but look at what they do, more importantly. We have so much going on in this city that's good... We have so much going on in this city that's good. We have a lot of good employees. We have a lot of good managers. We have a great executive team. I think we have, we even have a great council. But even when you're in a leadership position, you have to be prepared. You know, you have to know what you're going to talk about. You have to have looked at the material, read the material. Over the years, over the forty-one years, coming to these council meetings, I've observed a lot of council people not coming and not coming prepared. And all I'm going to say to you is, everybody has to start somewhere in their leadership role, but the more prepared you are, the better you can serve, the more informed that you will appear and be, and the more respect that you get from your constituents. And again, I want to give a shout out to the husband that came up here and said all those amazing things about me, because it's a poor duck that don't praise its own pond and I think I'm cute and my husband said I am.
Thank you. That concludes our communications for this evening. I have asked our city administrator to provide an update for. Ma'am, did you have something, did you?
Is it, is it absolutely too late to bring someone to the council?
Did you want to recognize her? If you want to come up and give your name and address, you will have three minutes.
Okay. So let me not waste any time. My name is Melissa Scott and I am a new resident here in Southfield. And the estates that I live in are Riverbank Estates. I cannot imagine that this issue is new and I know it won't be solved here, but thank you for just at least hearing us. So I moved at two, three, one, nine, one Coventry Woods Lane. And on December the first, we found out after I moved in, after the snow has melted, there are, there is a huge, um, water. It, it's in the backyard, it looks like there's a lake back there, but it's not. There's just a lot of clogs in the piping. So we've called plumbers. Apparently the, the neighbors that were there before me have come across this issue several times and to no avail. And so I've called the city, we've called plumbers. When it rains, the, the water just accumulates. There's so much water, you can't even walk in, in the back of my house. So I have these diagrams. I don't know if I should give them to maybe the city planner, but it's affecting eight houses. And so no one knows, you know, what we've, we've moved on top of. Some people say that it's clay and that's why the water's accumulating, but now the water is getting in our basements. And from what I'm told, um, they're saying that it's a resident problem. Well, the resident problem is eventually really going to be a city problem. Some of the residents that were there long before me said, said that the city came out and tried to rectify the problem a long time ago. Eight years ago, they had a, a quote done for eighteen thousand dollars. I can just imagine that it's probably quadrupled that now post-COVID. But the water is now compromising my basement because I'm the house that sits the lowest. And as a new member of the community, I'm very concerned that we haven't really, no one has gotten any help. No one has gotten any help up until now. KT works for the city and he came out and I, I just have to scream his, um, I'm very emotional right now. I apologize. But this guy came out and really, really helped us. He is, he is unequivocally the best city worker I've ever seen. He even went out and bought pipes so the water could go off of my house. But now my house is being compromised and I've been here six months and no one seems to be able to tell me what to do. No one says it's their fault. They're saying that we have to pay for it with our own money, money that we don't have. The, my neighbors are all elderly, so I'm trying to help them as well. And it's unfortunate that I'm having such a, a bad taste to, to move to Southfield. I'm having a really bad taste in my mouth because no one will help. I just want to know what we can do, what the city will offer, so that we can rec, help rectify the problem. I think somebody needs to take some kind of responsibility when you have a new resident who's paying taxes now, we're doing everything that we can do. We've called the plumbers, we've gotten together, we're trying to purchase things that will help us get the water out, but now we're being compromised and at this point, I'm ready to leave.
All right, so your, your time is up.
Okay.
Our city administrator is actually going to give us an update on what's being done. There are certain areas in the city, but, um, our Director of Public Works is in the audience. He's the person you're going to want to speak to. He'll take down your.
Is that KT?
No.
Oh, well, please make sure that he, that you all know that I spoke very highly of him because he has done everything he can to help us.
Yeah, and he will, um, after his item is done, he can meet you out in the hallway, get your information and.
Now, who was that? Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. If it's water related, then you can, you can talk to him as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. At our last meeting, there were a number of people who had issues with basement water from the torrential downpours that we had and I've asked Mr. Zorn if he could please update the, the council on what's, what's been done up to date.
Certainly. The two events I'm speaking of are the June twentieth, um, rain event, which was roughly about one point two inches of rain in, in little, about one and a quarter hours. The second event will be the July ninth and tenth rain event, which was about three point five inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period. So two different events. The first event, and this focuses primarily on the Pier Street Lift Station, which consists of three pumps and has inlets serving basically three different blocks within that area. This is an area that historically has had some flooding. Two thousand and fourteen, we embarked on a plan that, um, had us rebuild the Pier Street Pump House and install this well station. About thirty-five million dollars in investment, but, and with about eight point seven million going to build the well and the disconnect. The immediate assistance, and there's been roughly around a hundred homes impacted, different definitions of flooding. Some had flooding just in the street, curb to curb, where drain restrictors were working. Some people did have water within their home. Some people had flooding in their backyard. And so this definition of flooding has three different terms when people are talking about it. On those homes that had interior flooding, homeowners have the option to work with us where we're contacting SWF to come in and do a, a cleanup of the water inside the home. That is not a restoration, but our first priority there is to deal with the immediate to eliminate any possible threat of, of, uh, water, that water in the home can pose. The other, um, piece on that is we encourage people to file a claim with their homeowner insurance as well as the Michigan Municipal Risk Authority, who is the City of Southfield's insurance entity. We are still investigating the events of, of June twentieth. It's interesting when one looks at the volume of rain that fell in that lesser period and how much it did verse over what happened in that twenty-four hour period, where three ti, almost three times the amount of rain fell. And we only have, I believe the number was about three or four calls from the July ninth and tenth event. We continue to do the investigation. The Risk Authority has assigned a legal counsel to the matter. We are also, have asked our consulting engineer who designed the system to give us their, their understanding of what happened. And it's not just the design of the system, but it's the integration of electronic controls. And we are bringing in an independent entity to, um, investigate and as a private report. Main leads for water are going to be cameras to, if we can see if there are any blockages. So we continue to investigate, strongly encourage people to file, uh, claim forms, for, for events. And as stated by the young woman, you know, you need to remember that Pier Lift Station is in a combined sanitary storm area. Our, the scope of our work was to separate the storm and, and the sanitary system. East side of the city is in that city. Think a couple of the addresses I heard are in the Farmington Evergreen Hills system and there's a very different protocol. So that's, I, I can speak to that Pier Lift Station. We're continuing the investigation. We encourage people to file claims with both their homeowners as well as the Risk Authority and will continue to, uh, re, report back to council. I would need to know the locations of, of the others. Uh, I believe Coventry Woods is on the west side of the city off of Bell Road. Am I in the right area?
Yeah.
So that is in the Farmington Evergreen Hills area. Stormwater is a responsibility of the individual homeowner as well as the Neighborhood Association. The reality is when the homes were built in Southfield, the bulk of them did not have retention ponds. When you look at modern subdivisions today, and I, I encourage you, and when you drive out there, you'll see a fore bay for that first flush, then you'll see a place for that water to sit. Every other lot is crowned. If you walk the backyards of five, six of our homes, they share maybe one beehive that inlets into the, an area. I would need to speak to KT as to what he found out. But you want some ponding, it, it's not a horrible thing to have some ponding. As to the water coming into the basement, I would want to take a look at, you know, if the water's coming through the walls, that, that's clearly a homeowner's responsibility. Yes, we do have programs. We have a chore program. If you're income eligible, the dollar limit on the chore programs rate around six hundred dollars. We have a ship program, which usually has a waiting list. We do do, we do occasionally are able to do basement work. Well, we have, we, we have. But there you also have to income qualify for that, uh, program as well. You know, any homeowner, this is what a private inspection is about. And, um, you know, and I would ask, was a private inspection done on that home? And if there, there was a history and other people known, was something not disclosed? Have you contacted within six months your realtor? Because that should have been disclosed if, if there was a history of water coming in. Trees and roots. A lot of the homes in Southfield, when they were built and it was, used a clay pipe. And when you look at, at that pipe, you'll see that there is no, it's not wrapped in environmental. Today, we would have a PVC pipe wrapped with an environmental fabric with pea gravel around it. That would be what a modern system would look like. What we have in a lot of these homes and through my work, uh, through NSP or SNRI, I've seen a lot of the digups of these where the clay pipe will be completely filled with dirt. It's very tough. You can get that routed, you could flush that out, but it's tough. And the clay pipe, your house, you, you buy a fifty, sixty-year-old home, that pipe doesn't last forever. These are unfortunately some of the realities all of us as homeowners have to deal with. But from your house to our system, that's historically, and I say historically, has been considered a private function. People don't like it, you know, it's the same thing with, with connecting to a city sewer system. That function from your house to the city sewer line is a private function. The water lead from our water main to your home is historically been a private function. Not until these recent lead copper rules have that, has that changed. So we, um, I want to just go back to the Pier Street event. We continue to investigate. People need to fill out claim forms to city council. This could very well be a matter of litigation. And we're going through the, e, e, essentially the design and the component, an analysis of the components that make up that well. And I hope this information helps to our residents. I know it's difficult. I, I will share with you, I had a sister, last community, I, I have a sister who didn't speak with me for two years, because the last city I was working in, she had her basement flood. And I, I will tell you, that community has spent millions of dollars dealing with stormwater. There's a debate going on in this state about stormwater and stormwater utilities. There are communities who are putting these in place. And I will, you know, council knows, the administration is in favor of putting in place a stormwater utility system. We have to build a system that handles these freak rain events. I mean, three point five inches in a twenty-four hour period. I don't know if you saw some of the stuff on the west coast. It wiped out roads. I mean, our weather patterns are changing so quickly and erratically that all of us that homeowners need to start figuring this out. We could drive down to Dearborn Heights and I can show you where a beautiful street of homes was bought out just for water storage. And it's the types of things with, that we are facing. I last worked in a community that has a tunnel miles long under Eureka Road for water storage and for these rain events. Every taxpayer pays just under three mils for that tunnel. Now, so these are the issues that we're facing. We hear Candace Miller out in Macomb County talking about stormwater and the systems they're facing. You know, th, this is the issue. And with climate change, it's going to become more challenging. All of us as homeowners, making sure our pipes are clean, uh, making sure you're great. So many times when my staff walks around, we'll see that we put malts around our house, just making sure you've got a positive drain. Gutter extensions moving that rain around, away from your house can matter. We're happy to work with people, but this is, this is unfortunately a shared, shared problem and I can't be any more honest about it. So I'll.
Councilman Hicks?
Well, Mr. Zorn, first of all, I want to thank KT, if I'm saying his name properly.
Yep, Kevin, Kevin Turnquest Supervisor, Superintendent in Streets, Highways. And storms are handled and charged to our streets and highways.
I thank your team as well as yourself for the information that you've shared. My question is, I'm assuming from the list that you required last meeting, you followed up with that information and recommendations to those who signed up? And those who are watching have heard your proposed next steps. What are we doing to communicate this to those who may not have signed up?
We, we have a data, database. And to those who haven't, we've done, we've done some door-to-door knocking and we're messaging. I know that an email was, was, uh, a, a notice was sent out for, where people to file claims and we're, we'll reinforce that, working with Community Relations and a lot of door-to-door has been done on this.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And maybe we just should talk to Community Relations, not only for this, but also to, to help with the chore program with ship, just to continue to get that message out as well.
Tonight, we're asking for action on the chore program. We've, we've received an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant for that program and it will help.
Yeah, I'm thinking another, here's another topic we could have on our cable show of what we can offer homeowners who fit, you know, certain criteria and guidelines. Thank you, Mr. Zorn. Next, we have our consent agenda items. Council, do you have any items you wish to be pulled for further discussion?
Through the chair, item C.
Okay, any other items? I have a comment on item D. So here, all right, we got our interim Director of Public Works. What is your question, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the question that I had on item C was related to the, the organization that requested for the permit. My question is, the city is helping to pay for signage and the labor to put up that. Should that go to the person requesting?
No, so this is signage on our public road. This was not part of the permit. It's just when the permit was pulled, the, the crash history at that location and, you know, the, the hazardous situation came to our attention and we decided to take some action.
Okay, so flip side. If it's from that finding, should we reimburse the permit fee? Because it is something that we deemed is something that we should remediate.
There's nothing that we are doing at this location that the private entity has spent funds on.
Thank you, that, that's what I was looking for. Thank you, sir.
All right. All right. My question on item D, which is the Water Cross Connection Control Inspections. My question on item D, which is the water cross connection control inspections, we're proposing to use a company, HydroCorp, we've used in the past. I received an email from a resident who, I guess, last year when they came to do the inspections, they left a hanger on his door. And their information was helpful, but he didn't feel that it, it almost felt like it was a scam or, you know, there wasn't any official city notice. If we could do something better with communicating to residents that we show up to their homes with this information, I think that would be, would be helpful. He said the, you know, the information was very helpful and it was good, but it was just, oh, here's a door hanger, we came and looked at your property and it was just a little bit confusing. So, I think if we can find a way to better communicate that to the residents that we're showing up to.
We'll take a look and see what kind of cross branding we can do with that hanger. And again, as we're talking about water sewer and that, this program protects our water system from cross contamination. As someone who, on their home, you know, homes should have diverters on their hose bibs. Someone's system could be backfed. And I'll share with council, just last week in Midland, their system was tampered with. They found an individual who'd broken into their water supply system and had messed with valves as well as chemicals. And that the entire town was on a boil, a water alert.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Is there something like a letter or something to let people know that there will be an area doing that?
Yeah.
Because it's just kind of strange to have anyone come to your house and-
There is a letter that goes out before they go out in the door hanger, but we'll do a review of the notices and that and-
Yeah, we'll look into, maybe the branding is not on point or something that it's making it look like it's not official. So, we'll-
And I'll send you the information as well, just so you can see what was done.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Motion?
Any other questions, Councilman? Yeah. Councilman Hicks?
Through the chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through I.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve agenda item A to authorize an agreement with the Anti-Defamation League of Michigan for use of the, for Casi Municipal Campus for a walk. Item B, approval of an amendment of the agreement for Oakland County's local fiscal recovery fund distribution. Item C, Winora Avenue Speed Limit Traffic Control Order. Item D, authorization to contract for water cross connection control inspections. Item E, to amend resolution 2023.168 for the paymentous water payment processing. Item F, contract extension for the document management services. Item G, additional funds for the senior chore program. Item H, authorization to purchase the required Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services ground ambulance data collection systems reporting. And item I, the renewal of the city planner employment contract for Mr. Crowde. Any questions for, or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we go to our public hearings and site plan. And first up is PSLU 24-0012, a special use request by tier management to add beer, wine, and liquor sales to a gas station under development on Northwestern Highway. Before we do that, ma'am, you had a question for our water department? He's in the hallway now, if you wanted to speak to him. I didn't want you to miss that opportunity. All right, Mr. Crowde?
Good evening. As you stated, our first public hearing is PSLU 24-0012. This is to add beer, liquor, and wine sales to a gas station development currently underway at 28681 Northwestern Highway. The site has a B3 zoning, the future land use is consistent. It previously received site plan approval from council. They were approved prior to the allowance of beer, wine, and liquor sales at the gas station. Here's a photo of the site in the preliminary stages of construction. This is the approved site plan with landscaping. You remember, this particular site had the mural added to the pavement. They've provided a floor plan of where their beer, wine, and liquor will be provided within the interior of the C store. These are the previously approved elevations of the building. And with that, I'd like to invite the petitioner and his representatives to come up and add anything that you'd like to add regarding your request.
There's nothing further that we want to add, we're just here to answer questions.
If you could just introduce yourself and then take a seat, and after the public hearing, you can come up and answer questions.
My name is Joe Shalal, I'm the attorney on behalf of Tier Management. This is Norrie Tier.
Norrie Tier, I'm the owner of the property.
Good evening. Tony Capuzzi with CMA Design Services, we're the design build contractors and if there's any questions on the building.
So, we need to hold a public hearing first, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat, and then you can come back up and answer any questions that council may have.
All right. So, we will now have a public hearing for PSLU 24-0012, the special use request by tier management to add beer, wine, and liquor sales to the gas station convenience store under development at 28681 Northwestern Highway. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. You know, I keep hearing all of this negative stuff about gas stations and whether or not they want to sell beer and wine and food. People these days, because our society is different, the way we live is different, and so many different things are trending. People don't even go to the grocery store anymore. You've got Door Hub and all of these other places that can bring you groceries. They can bring you food if you just want something to eat out. So, if we're allowing all these other creative businesses, why can't we allow gas stations to be creative? They have to do what they need to do to make their business viable and to stay with the times. I think it's great that we are allowing gas stations to thrive and do what they need to do. And especially the gas stations that make it a point to be community corporate participants with the community that provide a clean place, that hire people from the area, all of that is a plus. And if this gas station is willing to come to our city, not ask for a tax abatement, and construct a new state-of-the-art gas station, and hopefully they'll consider it being LEED certified with all of these sustainable things, I think it's a great idea. I'm happy to see any business that comes to the city of Southfield. I don't care wherever I may live in the world or own a house, Southfield is my baby. This city raised me. And again, thanks for the compliment, I do look young. But, you know, let's just allow businesses to come to our community, to be good corporate participants with the community, to support the community, so that the community in turn could support them. And I'm in total favor of this special land use. And look at that drawing there, man, that is beautiful. Is that CAD, 2D, or 3D?
Please address your comments to the council.
Oh, I was just asking a question. Is that CAD, like 2D or 3D? But the rendering is beautiful. I can't wait to see it. And I like the marker right there in the corner that says "mobile." And we should consider getting some of those markers in gas stations that are entering into our city or leaving our city. Thank you.
Justin Hanna, I'm an attorney with Taft, Titania, and Hollister, based in Southfield. My family also owns a business in Southfield at 15600 West Ten Mile Road. It's a liquor store. I've been in front of this council before relating to a very similar issue that affected my family's business. And I just want to reiterate my comments from that prior meeting that, you know, I don't think it's a good idea for the city of Southfield to be filling, over-subscribing on liquor licenses and beer and wine type stores. It's bad for, it's bad for the existing business owners, and I think it's bad for the residents. Because we are over-subscribed on the number of licenses that the city has to offer, and those are based on population. And so, I think that's, you know, a pretty important thing to consider when approving these things. The last time I was up here, the city planner mentioned that there were no other, you know, new licenses that he knew of that were coming through the process. And I think this is a perfect example of like what's going to happen to the city. You're going to have three, four, or five different liquor stores on every corner, and it's going to turn into the type of city that I don't want to see Southfield turn into. So, I just wanted to make sure that I reiterate those sentiments from the prior meeting. I think this is not going to be the last one, and I hope that you all appreciate that. And I just want to consider, from a 30,000-foot view, I don't have anything necessarily against this particular project, from a 30,000-foot view, I don't think it's a good thing for the city to have all of these licenses come in and pack the city. It's not good for my family's business. I don't think from my perspective as a lawyer, as a lawyer at a large law firm, I don't think it's something that, you know, big law firms, for example, would look at as a positive thing when choosing where to be located in the state of Michigan. I mean, we love the city of Southfield, but I just don't want it to head in the wrong direction. Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Stoka. I represent Franklin Liquor, which is right behind the site to be approved. I agree with everything that Justin said. The community has a lot of licenses that are coming into the area. The city is going to be known for liquor and an investment of it, such as the Greenfield and Ten Mile, which is the most heavily dense liquor licenses in the state of Michigan. These licenses coming in are going to affect our community, and more or less, it's going to affect the future of our kids. We would hope that you would consider these, but in reality, this is just a formality. I think that the board already made their decision, it's already a done deal, and things are already going forward. This is my experience from other meetings that we participated in, you know, but I would like to have it on the record that we are against this and we really don't think that this should go forward. Thank you.
Keith Harris, I agree with the previous two speakers. Southfield is growing too full of liquor, gas stations now. The kids have already changed the name of the city to Liquorfield. Maybe we should put up signs at every borderline saying, "Welcome to Liquorfield." Now, people should be smart if they're going to buy liquor. Do you know liquor in the gas stations is about a dollar fifty and sometime even higher than the liquor stores? People have to start thinking before they purchase. Get your gas at a gas station. You know, I looked in, you know, around the state of Michigan with some of these gas stations, you know, they were selling Whippets and they were selling vapor, their little vape device to go with your vape pens. You know, these gas stations are not Wal-Mart's. These gas stations, I have to say again, are not Wal-Mart's. These are gas stations, and they want to sell liquor at the expense of putting previous businesses that's been here for decades out of business. Sometime, our city council just have to think. I thought we were going to have a moratorium on gas stations, liquor stores anyway. You know, it's all right to, they, oh, I don't doubt, it's pretty. It's real pretty. But pretty ain't worth a damn thing when it comes down to our kids' safety. Like I said, you hear people come up here and make these accusations, but some people ain't took the time out to even birth a child to talk about what's good. You know, I love, everybody's kid ain't going to be as smart as mine, because my children are all successful, they are all brilliant, and I'm so glad that I raised them right. You know, every kid with a problem, guess where they're going to go? They're going to go where they can get liquor fast. They, I mean, think about this. Mental health, liquor, vaping, everything is coming far too convenient for our children. We have to think about the kids in our community first. You know, when kids go to the liquor store, they're more likely to get turned around at a liquor store than a gas station. Think about this, please. I'm just saying, think about your grandkids, think about mine, think about all of this, because most accidents, as statistics show, happen 10 miles away from home. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding PSLU 24-0012? All right, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay.
Joseph Shalal, on behalf of Tier Management. We heard a couple of things from the community which we respect. First thing is that Liquor Control Commission has requirements-
Can you speak into the mic, sir?
Liquor Control Commission has requirements that require people such as Mr. Tier here to check ID, make sure that people are 21-years-old. He has scanning systems in his stores so that it requires the clerk to check ID before the transaction is completed. So, to protect that the neighborhood, the children and families from underage drinking, this is one thing that's in place at his, all of his gas stations, in fact, where he has a scanning system, point-of-sale system that requires the transaction to stop and require ID when alcohol is purchased of anyone, not just someone that's 21-years-old. Another thing that we heard was there's an influx of licenses that's coming into Southfield. I don't know if the planner knows off the top of his head, how many license applications do we have for gas stations to have license right now in the city?
You can respond if you know the answer.
Well, what I recall is that liquor, the retail sales is based on population, and I believe that based on our population, we have 77, and there's only been 52, plus or minus the most recent ones applied for. The other thing that I want to reiterate is that if this was just a normal retail store, a liquor store, a supermarket that sold retail sales of beer, wine, and liquor, they wouldn't be before the council. It's because they're a gas station, they require special land use approval. So, the city has not maximized the number of retail liquor licenses that are available based on our population.
Thank you. In addition, the area that this station is going up is a transient area, for lack of a better word. Basically, it's a passageway to multiple cities, so people driving home and going to work pass by, so the population density technically increases. So, there is a need for additional service. Now, when we look at this station, it's not really a liquor store. It's a full-fledged gas station that has a very small amount, if you see, of shelf space on the plan with regards to where the beer, wine, and liquor is going to be. So, you know, the fear of liquor stores that, you know, this gas station is going to destroy their business, I have not seen a liquor store in my experience, and I'm in this business, I'm primarily a liquor licensing attorney. I've probably done over 2,000 transactions since I've been licensed, and I have not seen a liquor store dramatically affected because a gas station obtained liquor, because primarily consumers go to- primarily consumers go to the store that they're used to when they buy their liquor, and transient pass-through buys, people who are driving through normally go to a gas station, and then they buy it as an impulse item. So it's not something where people are thinking, "Oh, this is my destination. I need to go to that gas station to buy liquor." No, they primarily think of the big boxes, and then the liquor stores, and then gas stations. So it's, it's really an incidental market. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I can add, I'm gonna add something to it. In ours, in all our loca, my locations that I own, we scan IDs. You have to have driver license, they have to scan. Otherwise, the sale, whether it's tobacco, or alcohol, or anything that's related that you have to be 21, your ID, you have to have your driver license, and it has to be scanned before anything can happen. If you don't have driver license, we don't even consider selling you anything. So you have to show your driver license, and we have to scan it. Our system will allow you to make, to make the sale, and we cut the sale at midnight, at 2:00, and starts, we, our system allows us to do that, too. Just, just for reference.
Any questions on the building?
Council?
Security questions, or?
Someone wants to make a motion?
Mr. President? Yes. Excuse me. Can't even read here, I'm sorry. I move that PSLU 24-0012 special use request of tier management to add beer, wine, liquor sales to gas station convenience stores at 28681 Northwestern Highway. Be approved.
Support.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve PSLU 24-0012. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed for, for the, for yeses, one opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our next public hearing is PSLU 24-0013. I'll also introduce PSP 24-0010. Petitioner is the City of Southfield Park and Recreation Department. Site is located at 27577 Loser Road. Existing zoning is R4 Residential. The project is to improve an existing park by adding a dog park, paths, and other improvements to Loser Woods Park. As I stated, the site is currently zoned and future land use for public park purposes. Existing conditions at the site? Some photos of the existing gravel parking lot. There's a small pathway, and it's basically open green space with some mature trees. The proposal is to develop a multi-phased dog park with the first phase, including a new entrance parking lot, extended pathway system running east to west and connectivity, and, and the dog park gate entrance, which I'll have the petitioner describe in greater This is the phasing plan, which will include barrier-free, accessible parking, bike, bike rack parking, and control mechanisms for the dogs entering the park. Pathway system, there's an existing gravel, or path that transgresses across the western portion of the park. That's gonna be removed and increased in size, and then connected all the way down to Loser, and there'll be two future connections to adjacent properties. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up and add any further details that they would like prior to the public hearing.
Good evening, Council. Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation Director. This is Mike Donlin with Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark. He was our engineer.
Speak up, please.
Again, sorry. Basically, we're asking permission for this three-acre dog park. There will be a path that runs from Lincolnshire to Loser. It currently, in its design phase, has connecting points to the school as well as the synagogue. It will have a five-foot fence that encompasses the small and large portion of the dog park. The parking lot will be a gravel parking lot with approximately 33 spaces. We did receive some input from our last meeting about concern for handicap spaces, and so we have added additional spaces to that, to that portion of the, of the project. We have five in total. There will be an area for porta potty that will be enclosed. The berm that runs along Loser will be leveled so that we have great sightlines into the park. We will have some tree removals there, and we will be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if, Mike, if you have, I know that we've had a question before about linear feet of the path. I believe it's 1,700?
1,700 linear feet of pathway.
All right, we will have, hold the-
Public hearing.
And then see what questions come up. This is a public hearing for PSLU 24-0013, a special use request by the City of Southfield and the Recreation Department to improve the Loser Woods Park, the west side of Loser, north of 11 Mile Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
And being a longtime resident, thank you, Mr. Council President, I do know for a public hearing that you have to give your address as well. P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 4037-0155. My telephone number's 248-346-0439. You know, we have a great Parks and Recreation Department. I wasn't sure when Ms. Terry Fields first came, because, you know, you get to the point where you become a creature of habit, and you like the people that are put in place. And after watching what she's done since she's been here, I'm just in total support of the things that they're attempting to do. That area needs a little bit of TLC. I'm all about parks, but I want the Parks and Recreation Director to refresh, refresh my memory. I'm not sure if they have a lot of things or equipment that kids play with there, or is this just going to be more of a walking park with a dog park and a trail? I need my memory to be refreshed on this particular park. But I like the fact that they have the pictures of the parks displayed on the pavilion so that the people can see them when they're walking. It also advertises what parks we have in our city. But this area needs some TLC, and I'm in total support of a special land use request, PSLU 24-0013, to make that area and that park look amazing. So please refresh my memory more detail about the inside of the park, and specifically, when you talk about enhancements, what will all of the enhancements consist of? 'Cause I can't, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't really see that small diagram like that in detail. Thank you.
Hello, name's Tony Martin, 21025 Concord. I'm representative of Beacon Square Homeowners Association and a resident of Beacon Square. For a long time, former councilperson and former mayor Brenda Lawrence has asked for dog parks in the city of Southfield. We're finally doing what Brenda wanted. Thank you very much. Right now, we're just doing a dog park. We're looking at future development of the park down the road, but we're happy to have the dog park at Loser Woods. Now, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on PSLU 24-0013? All right, seeing no one else, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Fields, before we take questions from the council, can you address the, I know we're, this is being done in phases?
Yes. To address the question about what else is going to be in the park, what other amenities? So we start out with the path and the dog park, along with some benches along the path, as well as bollards that light the path for safety in, in the evenings. Part of Phase Two, or Phase Two as we move forward, will and could, with your approval, include shade structures. We have a request from one of the council members, as well as our city administrator, to have some examples of adult fitness equipment there. So part of the next phase, second phase, will be adult fitness equipment. So what we'll do is, ahead of time, because you never know when we could perhaps get a funding source, is give three examples of the kind of adult fitness equipment that we could have at the park. And, yeah, I would say adult fitness equipment, shade structures, and, and really live in the space for a little while and see what other kinds of amenities, whether that be enlarging the parking or not. So we'll, we'll find out what kind of use we have, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Haynes?
First of all, I think it's a great idea. I don't have any dogs anymore in my house. Thank goodness. But, all my kids have dogs, and most of them live here, so that would be really nice. Just wanted to know, is there going to be a name for the dog park?
A name for the dog park?
Like Rover's Resort? No, just kidding.
Boy, we haven't talked about that. Loser Woods is the name of the park, but we've not, we've not talked about a name of the dog park, other than Loser Woods Dog Park. That's what we refer to it, only because of its location, but I, that's, your leadership can, can decide if there, you want to go away from that and, and name it, or, or maybe put it out there for the public to name. Yeah, we would, we would be in support. We just want it to be a really safe park. We want folks to use it. We're gonna keep it clean and maintained, but we're also gonna have some learning. This'll be our first dog park, and I know that there's been a couple folks, too, that have talked about, questions about the logistics of the park, right? You know, where are they gonna get the license? Where are they gonna get the vaccination? So, we're talking about that. I know that Councilwoman Banks had mentioned that at one of the meetings, that really want to make sure that all the departments are working together, and we have a good plan going forward about, you know, who is going to actually be giving those fobs, and who's gonna be giving the dogs license, because all of that goes together. We're gonna be a team, and if, you know, if the clerk's office is doing license, or the animal control, or the police department, we really want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, 'cause there's, there's gonna be a learning curve as we go forward. It's just that you've allowed us to spend as, the time to do our homework and to be able to react to some of the input that we've received, and then really taking a look at the design functions. Just even in, like we've said before in front of you, even in the last six months, we've gone from a four-foot fence around the dog park to a five-foot, just because we've reached out to some other people, including Oakland County, and they've actually had some dogs escape at that four-foot height. So, yeah, we're, we're feeling really good about all the work that's been done, the support that you've given going forward, too, and the questions that you've asked, because it makes us tweak our game as, as we move, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you. I just wanted to state, one of our residents had spoken, I don't know if you heard Terry, but she kinda questioned, "Why are we using money towards the dog park versus helping residents with the storm?" I just wanted to share with our residents that this was possible because of grants that we got, and so we're leveraging money that we receive that has to go to a project like this. So I just wanted to make sure that that's out there so that our residents don't think we're insensitive to their challenges, but this was earmarked by a grant that has to be used in this fashion. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for all your work toward this.
Absolutely, and thank you for bringing that up, too, because I'd be remiss in not saying who that grant came from, and that was Oakland County Parks. That gave us a substantial amount of money, $100,000, towards this development. And, of course, we've heard from our residents and, and from our council leadership that a dog park is, is really important for our residents, so I appreciate you bringing that up, though.
Well, I was just gonna, another comment, since this was councilwoman Banks' baby, maybe she want to move the motion.
I think she has some questions.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, the Neighborhood Services Committee. We worked on this for two, two-and-a-half years, looking at various locations, and, and thank you, Terry, for working diligently with us. I know we've had lots of changes to this whole proposal. I personally am excited about it now that I am the grandparent of a dog, and my dog, which is a Bernese mountain dog, or my grand dog, has lots of energy, and we have nowhere to take her to run, so I'm really, really looking forward to this dog park. And I know the mayor also was extremely passionate about getting one approved, so can't wait to see how this is gonna turn out, because we have thoughts for another location also in Southfield. But, a question. We received a communication from the synagogue that's in the area, addressing some concerns that they had. Were those concerns answered, and are they happy with the response that was given? Can someone address that letter, please?
The concerns with the connectivity?
Oh, well, just-
If, if I, if I may?
Yes, yes.
There is still some tension between the synagogue and frankly, the school district. I'll also share with this, with council that the school district has reached out to engineering and submitted some drawings, so we are seeing some plans on the proposed site there. Lee Schultz, city engineer, shared that with me. In addition, we are working to accelerate the installation of the path at a quicker rate than going through our normal bid process. We've cut that out of the project, and we've asked HRC to work with it, to get us prices to cut the dirt, like, for the path. And once we get this approved site plan, hopefully we'll be able to move that, cut the dirt, lay the gravel, get the asphalt down, and address the stormwater, the, the basic contour of the stormwater. And our goal is to get that done, you know, first mid-September. So we're gonna move that forward. That, you know, being a good neighbor, Terry and her team and HRC spent this tremendous amount of time with representative from the school district, the, the rabbi from the synagogue, their board was there, but we're gonna, we're, actually, last week, a lot of, we, we've got it lined up to get that price in place using our unit pricing, hopefully, that we have, so that we're consistent with the budget we put together on this project.
Thank you, and sorry, Terry, I didn't mean the dog park, but just the whole, whole, overall plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I, I was a little disturbed to hear that, first of all, to read that letter, that there wasn't cooperation, but I'm glad to hear that we are gonna provide a, a trail, so they will be able to walk on the Sabbath and the upcoming holidays, so.
Yeah, I felt like we, Fred, myself, we had some other folks there from the city. We really were in collaboration and as a liaison between the schools and the synagogue, and just making sure that everybody felt comfortable with the connectivity, and much like we are and council is about the safety of people moving through that park to get from one place to another. So, yes, but I appreciate the, the question. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was, I was going to comment, I know that, I think I was at one of the first, I was only at one of the meetings, but between the synagogue and the schools and Parks and Rec, making sure that everybody understood and got all their questions answered, because I know you also met with the, the apartments on the other side of the park as well, just to make sure that all the neighbors were aware of what was going on and how they would be affected. just to make sure that all the neighbors were aware of what was going on and how they would be affected. The park opening plan is next spring?
Correct.
That, okay. And I know you mentioned it, I don't know if anyone, if it was, but there will be, it's not going to be a dog park open to everyone, but you will have to have your dog registered with the city, and it will be fobbed, is that correct?
Right, they'll, they'll receive a fob, and in order to receive that fob, you will have your dog license vaccinations, sorry, dog license vaccinations, and also watch a video provided by our city that actually gives orientation on, you know, okay behaviors in a dog park, especially for those who have never attended. So, there'll be a little bit of a training, if you will, for owners, so, yes. And then, they'll receive a fob, but everything is registered through our city. And like I said earlier, much to Councilwoman Banks', the logistics of all of that is still being worked out, and we're even working with legal on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I move that PSLU 24-0013, special use request by the City of Southfield Parks and Recreation Department to improve an existing city park, Lhasir Woods, on the west side of Lhasir, north of 11 Mile.
Be approved.
Be approved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU 24-0013. Council, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item, through the chair, is the approval of the site plan.
Council, do you have any other questions on the site plan for this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that S, excuse me, PSP 24-0012, site plan review request by the City of Southfield Park...
1-0.
Oh, I'm sorry, 1-0, 0010. Site plan review request by the City of Southfield Parks and Recreation Department to improve an existing park by adding a dog park, paths, and other enhancements to the Lhasir Woods Park located on Lhasir Road between 11 and 12 Mile Road, be approved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSP 24-0010. Council, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd just like to, thank you very much, and we are very excited. I'd just like to remind the audience to minimize the talking. If you need to talk, to please go outside in the hall. Thank you. All right, next up is a rezoning request at 25155 Greenfield Road.
Yes, through the chair, I'll introduce the rezoning request, as well as the site plan at this time. Petitioners, Whitmore Investments. Existing zoning is B3 general business and vehicular parking. Proposed zoning is B3 general business, and the project is to consider rezoning the parcel entirely to B3 general business and to construct a product storage building as an accessory to the existing grocery store. This is in response to a number of code violations over the years, to clean that site up. Currently, the, approximately the building footprint is zone B3, and at one time in the past, the buildings were surrounded by vehicular parking. So, they'll need to have that rezoned to allow for the storage building to be constructed. You can see here in this aerial photo, outside storage that's in violation of our codes of ordinances. There's other violations with debris and garbage. The building will have all that enclosed, as well as product that's being stored off-site, onsite, enclosed to the store itself. Existing conditions. And you can see that some of the recyclable bundling from products was left outside, as well as some pallets and other debris, that'll be cleaned up. There's currently a knee wall, about three feet, three-and-a-half feet high, and a six-foot dog-eared fence located to the rear. The neighbor adjacent has asked for a 10-foot-high fence that will require a waiver should the rezoning and site plan approval be granted. Here's the site plan with landscaping and improvements to the fence screening, as well as the proposed building. These are elevations, and then perspective of what's being proposed. Floor plan, and then additional landscaping. So, with that, I'd like to ask the petitioner if he has any comments he would like to add, and this will require a public hearing to consider the rezoning from vehicular parking to B3.
Good evening again, Richard Konick, Siegel Tumala Associates Architects, 29200 Northwestern Highway. I don't think I have anything else to add from Mr. Crowde, so if you've got questions, I'll answer whatever you have, so.
Right, so we'll have the public hearing and see what happens. All right, this is a public hearing for PZR 24-0004. The request to rezone .7 acres of land at 25155 Greenfield Road from vehi- vehicle parking to B3 general business. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. If it's possible, could council refresh my memory and the people's memory that are watching this meeting, from the vehicular parking zoning to B3 general business? What are some of the things that can be done? I know that that's a very busy site. I go to Groves, I love their sushi, as well as craving sushi. And I would be in support of anything that's going to allow a business to enhance themselves, to move their business to whatever is trending, to keep their livelihood going. So, if you could just refresh my memory and the viewer's memory, what does this project consist of more specifically, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this rezoning? All right, public hearing is closed. Mr. Crowde, would you...
I'll just try to summarize. The vehicular parking is specifically for off-site parking and a small attendant building. So, if there was a parking attendant, no other buildings are allowed in the vehicular parking district. So, in order for them to build an accessory building to support the retail, which is permitted in B3, they need a B3 zoning. There are a number of uses that are allowed in B3, as you recall, but the principal use on the site is retail, and they need the retail zoning to be able to build the storage accessory building to their principal use.
Council, do you have any questions? I did have one question with the front of the building, not the back of the building, but just someone saw this and asked, they noticed that the store went through a remodel. It's, they said it's very nice, but the sign in the front on Greenfield Road, there's a independent sign that still has the old name of the store. Are there plans to replace that at all, that you know of?
Well, I have the manager here, if I don't have an answer on that one.
If you could just give your name and address, please?
Yeah, small shiner, I'm actually a resident of Oak Park, 14650 Balfour Street. 14650 Balfour Street in Oak Park. So, yeah, regarding that sign, there were some plans as far as updating it, changing it. What we could do with it is limited, because apparently, according to code, we wouldn't be able to do like a full redesign. It would basically be minor modifications, which we did speak about. There was a considerable expense, and there was also some nostalgic value, you might say, with leaving it as is. So, right now, we're, we do not have plans to, to change it. Might change it in the future, though.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I'm correct, it's probably an existing non-conforming sign. So, if they, if they substantially change the sign, they have to conform to the new requirements. They are, however, able to do any maintenance repairs within their existing signs area. So, if they want to make a substantial change, they have to conform to existing standards. But, they are permitted to maintain or restore the existing sign in its present location.
Okay.
And that, really, I'm going to ask you to, to act on the rezoning first, and then you can get into the site plan issues after that.
Council, do you have any other questions on the rezoning? Just need a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve PZR 24-0004. The request to rezone .7 acres of land at 25155 Greenfield Road from vehi- vehicular parking to B3 general business.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PZR 24-0004. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, we need an introduction of ordinance number 1791.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1791.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to introduce ordinance number 1791. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And through the chair, now, we're asking you to act on the site plan review request to construct a product storage building accessory to the existing grocery store at 25155 Greenfield Road.
Council, do you have any questions on the site plan review that was just...
I, I do want to point out, in this particular case, you do have our recommended resolution. This will require a waiver from the zoning board of appeals for the storage building rear setback, required 15 feet, proposed 10, and the fence height along the rear required 6 feet maximum, proposed 10 feet. So, if you do grant site plan approval, it will be conditioned upon the ZBA granting those waivers. Now, I know the question came up, what if the ZBA only allows an eight-foot-high fence? Well, then, then it would be subject to whatever the ZBA approves.
Okay. That was my question. All right, council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve PSP 24-008. The site plan review request by Whitmore Investments to construct a product storage building accessory to the existing grocery store at 25155 Greenfield Road with the stated conditions.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSP 24-0008. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, next we have PSP 24-0009. Site plan review request by GHG Detroit for a new vehicle showroom and service building at 2700 Telegraph Road.
Yes, through the chair, again, PSP 24-0009. Petitioners, GHG Detroit LLC. Property is located at 27,000 Telegraph Road. Existing zoning is RS Regional Shopping. Proposal is to construct a new Kia vehicle showroom and service building. This will be located south of the former Toys R Us building. Special land use for auto sales for the site was approved in 2018 per PSLU 18-001. Offsites, vehicle storage is located on West 8 Mile, and that was previously approved both by special land use and site plan in 2004. There's proposed hours of operation, number of employees anticipated between 35 and 45. Current zoning and future land use is a support of this request. And this is the existing Glassman pre-owned vehicle sales, which was the former Toys R Us building. They're proposing to build a new freestanding building as a Kia dealership to the south. And this is the parking layout for existing required-use cars, required Kia customer, employee, display, storage area, and onsite. Floor plans, proposed elevations, and then the rendering. The service bay to the right is to accommodate any vehicles that are electric vehicle charging, so that they have quick access to pull the vehicles out in the event of a fire. And I believe there's a two-hour rated firewall that's being recommended, required by the fire department to separate the service bay from the rest of the building. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner and his architect to come up and fill in anything that I've left out, and then answer any questions after our review.
Good evening, my name is Ken Moreland, 29895 Greenfield Road. I'm with Dorchen Martin &amp; Associates. We're the architects representing the applicant, the Glassman Automotive Group. As you probably know, the Glassmans have been a part of the fabric of the business community in Southfield for decades. And I am here this evening with Michael Glassman, who happens to be the third-generation ownership. The Glassmans are looking to construct a new vehicle showroom in order to provide service for the community for decades to come. It is, it has been approved unanimously by the planning commission. We have responded to the comments from the planning department, as well as the planning commission, and you'll see that in the conditions of the approval. I think that with that, I would open it up to any questions or comments you might have.
Council, do you have any questions? One question is, this showroom is going to partially block the mural. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so, they'll, they have an art requirement as far as this new proposal, and they'll have to mitigate the blocked mural for the previous approval.
That's, that's okay. Do you have any plans, or do you know what you plan to do?
At this point, I would say no. I do know that, you know, we will be bringing something before the Art Commission, for a commissioned piece of art, and/or we will make a contribution to the Art Fund.
Okay.
It'll probably be a combination. I know Mr. Glassman has expressed an interest in providing some form of art, but what, what that'll end up being, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to also mention that as part of this conditional approval, there will be some waivers required for the setbacks for the front side and rear to accommodate this proposed building. But, since the site has a regular shape to it, that's something that the ZBA can consider when, when reviewing their request.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move that we approve PSP 24-0009. The site plan review request by GHG Detroit to a new vehicle showroom and service building at 27,000 Telegraph Road.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve PSP 24-0009. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counsel, the next three items are all zoning ordinance text amendments. And we'll take them one at a time.
Through the chair, our first text amendment that we're asking for your consideration is to permit for administrative approval of eight-foot-tall fences for uses requiring enhanced security measures. This is a list of a number of recent ZBA waiver cases to allow for anywhere from a two to four-foot height variance on properties that have sensitivity, whether they be utility, communication, or other property entities such as Oakland County Water Authority. Due to this heightened state of both domestic and foreign terrorism, we've seen an increase in the request for fencing, security fencing in particular. We do not allow barbed wire fencing, other than in specific industrial areas. We have worked closely with the applicants to come up with a more decorative type of fencing. And we're asking for the administrative approval under certain circumstances, instead of having to wait for a six-week period to get on a zoning board of appeals and having the uncertainty of getting approved, to allow us to do that administratively in the office. So, the ordinance would be amended to include a definition for ornamental security fencing taller than six feet, and also giving the city planner the ability to do an administrative review up to eight feet. Anything above eight feet would still require going to a waiver, or in other circumstances that are not determined to be securely related, would still have to go to the zoning board of appeals. So, required to have a public hearing on this through the chair, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have afterwards.
Okay. We will now have a public hearing for PZTA 24-0003 for a zoning ordinance text amendment to permit administrative approval for fences up to eight feet tall for uses that demonstrate the need for increased security measures. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions for our site planner? Okay. No questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that PZTA 24-0003 zoning ord- two, excuse me, three, it is three. No?
Yeah.
You said two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Zoning text, zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V, zoning and planning, Chapter 45, zoning of the City of Southfield, zoning of the code of the City of Southfield by amending Article 4, Sections 5.37-1, to permit administrative approval of fences up to eight feet tall for uses that demonstrate the need for increased security measures be approved. Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to approve PZTA 24-0003 as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we're asking for you to introduce ordinance number 1792. And I do want to correct that the screen is saying 1793, but according to our agenda, it's ordinance number 1792.
Yep.
I move that counsel introduce ordinance number 1792, the zoning ordinance text amendment to permit administrative approval of fences up to eight feet tall.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to introduce ordinance number 1792. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair, our next text amendment is PTZA 24-0002, medical marijuana provisioning center and adult-use retailer hours of operation. Zoning amendment to consider amending the current hours of operation from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. We have been previously asked to review our neighbors. We seem to be in the middle of the extended hours on Saturday and Sunday, currently 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And there's a table of our joint communities that allow up to 10:00 PM in some cases. Currently, we allow Saturday 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Sunday 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And there's a request to increase those to stop, hard stop of 9:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. And that would include medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana. So, with that, we are required to have a public hearing.
All right. We will have a public hearing for PZTA 24-0002, zoning ordinance text amendment to change the permitted hours of operation of a medical marijuana provision centers and adult-use marijuana retailers. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce, Southfield, Michigan. I am opposed to the changing of hours. Those who are using marijuana, the facilities that are open later than the requested hours, if those individuals want to use marijuana, they should go to those facilities. What will they ask for next? Will they ask for a 24-hour operation? I'm totally opposed to the change of hours and the update to the changes. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for PZTA 24-0002? All right. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
I just want to point out that this would, if this should pass, this just changes the hours of operation that's permitted. The current provisioning centers that have been previously approved under special land use would have to come and individually request to have their hours extended from the current 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the council would have the ability to review each of those in an individual, on an individual basis. This just changes the text amendment allowing for the regulations up to 9:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Crowe?
Through the chair?
Yes. My previous ask was, do we have a projected volume of traffic that has come between 6:00 and 9:00 Monday through Friday, or any proposed business that they were potentially going to get on Saturday, Sunday from 6:00 to 9:00?
I don't, through the chair, I don't have any projections. I know that this came at the request of the petitioners that are currently closing at 6:00 PM and have to put up traffic barricades on their property because they're getting a number of people coming between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. But this was at the request of the current petitioners to increase the hours to be competitive with adjacent properties. But I don't have any metrics on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be possible for something to, for us to get those metrics?
Well, I, you held a public hearing.
Correct.
You could table this to a date certain, and I can request that the petitioners come and provide some additional information. You don't have to act on this tonight, now that you've held the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that at this time, counsel postpone this request, and I will make a motion until we get the...
Yeah. Through the chair, if I could ask Ms. Banks to postpone to a date certain, so whenever our next available council meeting is, in August?
It would be August 19th.
So, my recommendation is to postpone to a date certain of August 19th.
That's about a month. That should give enough time. Okay. Before, we do have another question, though.
I have a question. Can you go back to the screen with the other cities, please?
Sure. Just if I could, through a point of order, we have a motion on the floor. If we could have that seconded, and then we can have discussion.
Okay. Second. Support.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't make the motion yet. I thought there was a question.
Oh, I thought you were making the motion.
She, she was, I guess, was that considered a motion? I didn't think that it was considered a motion.
I'm sorry. I must have misheard you. I thought you were making a motion.
I said I would make a mo-, okay. I, I would like to request that PZTA 24-0002 rezoning ordinance text amendment to change the permitted hours of operation of medical marijuana provisioning centers and adult-use marijuana retailers be postponed to August 19th, 2024.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to postpone PZTA 24-0002 to a date certain of August 19th, 2024. Counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Haynes?
Yeah, I had some questions. Can you go back to, that's the screen there. Of all those cities, how many stores do they have?
We'd have to do research on that.
Okay. That's, that's a question I'd like to know, because that would be helpful. And also, a lot of them don't seem to have the population that we do have. Berkeley's smaller, Ferndale is smaller, Hazel Park is smaller.
We can, through the chair, we'll, we'll put the populations for each of these cities on here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And counsel?
So, if I could, I want to just be clear. We'll have, we'll try to do our best to research the number of stores, provisioning centers for each. We'll add the population. And Mr. Hicks, you wanted metrics as far as what you believe increased sales may be between 6:00 and 9:00?
And, and a traffic count, potentially?
Yes.
Yes, and security.
Security doesn't change.
Have they had any problems with security?
We, the last time that we talked with the police chief, there's no increase in any reported crime at any of these facilities.
No.
It's been, the only reported is if there's a traffic incident where they've used the address. But we will, I'll ask that as well.
Thank you.
So, counsel, while we have all these asks, any, anything else you would like researched? All right. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to postpone to a date certain of August 19th, PZTA 24-0002. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. And then we have our last text amendment proposal.
So, this is, I know this has been discussed for quite some time. I'll try to just do a high-level overview and answer any questions that counsel may have. Site plan review process discussion has taken place, where we've looked at administrative function, special land use, and other amendments. Nearly 80% of Oakland County communities delegate primary responsibility for approval of site plans to designate staff to typically the city planner equivalent, the planning commission, or some combination of the two, based on the type and scale of the project. Only 10% of cities in Oakland County have the city council making the final approvals for site plans. 65% of larger communities delegate primary responsibility for approval of site plans to designate staff. That's with population over 50,000. Another 22% provide for staff and planning commission approval for site plans on most projects, with legislative body approval required for larger, more significant projects likely to impact public infrastructure services in a substantial way. 13% of these communities have the legislative body making final approvals of site plan. We looked at the last five years, average number of just site plan reviews is 27 cases per year. Delegation of site plan approval to the planning commission would reduce the number of cases going before city council by an average of 19%, or four to six cases per year, based on the trends from the last five years. What are some of the advantages? It brings the city into alignment with best practices recommended by Michigan State University Extension Services, our Redevelopment Ready Community Program, and Michigan Economic Development Corporation, given priority consideration for certain state assistance and incentive programs, and access to dedicated technical assistance programs and funds. As stated previously, improves timeliness and efficiency of land use review process, eliminating approximately 30 days and two public meetings, especially for our small businesses. And it proves equity by lowering barriers, too, and improving opportunities for entrepreneurs, small businesses, and small-scale developments, many of which are local, and a high percentage of which are women and minorities. And it implements multiple objectives of sustainable Southfield 2.0 comprehensive plan adopted in 2022. We've looked at some case studies here, and I've highlighted a few of these in the past. Maple Tree Apartments, addition of four-unit townhome, Skills Gymnastics, Jack's Car Wash, Habitat for Humanity, and City of Southfield's Department of Public Works. These are just some of the illustrations to remind counsel and the audience of the type of projects that could have been approved at the planning commission level. And in order to do this, we've done a comprehensive review, Mr. Payson and the team, on all the areas that would need to be updated in our zoning ordinance. Most chapters make reference to site plan review approval and administrative approval. So, we want to increase the responsibility for administrative approval by the city planner, which will help reduce the number of cases that go to planning commission, and ultimately to city council, and to streamline, consolidate, clarify, modernize, and make consistent the procedures and standards for site plan review. Now, these standards are all approved by city council at one point or another. So, the regulations that will be held as administrative approval or approval by the planning commission, those regulations have to be approved or amended by city council. And here's a general summary of the areas that would be affected by this proposed change. I also will mention that currently, the city planner has authority to do full site plan approval in industrial districts, TVR, television, radio studio, office studio, IL light industrial, I-1 industrial, and P vehicular parking zoning districts. Accessory structures not to exceed the lesser of 25% of the gross floor area of an existing building on site. It's currently at 10,000 square feet, or, or 25%. So, for example, I mentioned earlier that 1,000-square-foot accessory structure, if it's 1,001 square feet, has to go through a full 90-day review process. We're trying to eliminate some pretty straightforward reviews. This would also include art installations, building facade alterations, landscape plan revisions, parking lot revisions, site lighting revisions, and site plans for existing developed sites that do not currently have an approved site plan on file that are not requiring a rezoning, a special land use, or new zoning... site plan on file that are not requiring a rezoning, a special land use, or new zoning variance approvals. Planning commission then would have the responsibility to review and take action on new site plans for the development or redevelopment sites for permitted and special uses, amendments to existing site plans that do not fall within the criteria for administrative site plan review, and site plans for existing developed sites that do not have an approved site plan on file that do not fall within the criteria of administrative site plan review for the city planner. City council would continue to see site plan approvals for all new sites related to an overlay development district, a residential unit development district, or a mixed-use quarter district, amendments to those that are considered major, and any site plan that meets the threshold of requiring a community impact statement. So typically, sites of 10 acres or greater, or that trigger based on environmental conditions or traffic reports, the need for a community impact statement. And then, we just cleaned up and streamlined the site plan supplemental requirements, whether it's being for administrative site plan or full council approval. We streamlined the administrative site plan review process as it relates and explains into the ordinance, and as well as the planning commission review and city council review process. We've kind of consolidated them all into certain sections that are now haphazardly over 70 years in different sections. So, again, the main purpose of this is to delegate greater authority for site plan approval to the planning commission, thereby reducing the amount of time for applicants to go through the review process by approximately 30 days and two additional meetings, and to reduce the amount of reviews by the planning commission by granting a greater allowance for city planner and its staff to do administrative review. With that, it's now appropriate time to have a public hearing, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for PZTA 24-0001, for zoning text amendments to amend Title V, zoning and planning, Chapter 45. Multiple articles, as was just described. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. All right, seeing no one coming to the podium, public hearing is closed. Council, do you have any questions for our city planner? Councilwoman Banks?
Mr. Crowe, could you please go back to the slide that said the projects, there was a slide that said projects approved by the planning commission, and were there some townhomes on there?
I believe, I believe the, what we're referring to is the Maple Tree Apartment Complex that added four units at Franklin Ave. So they added one four-unit townhouse building to their existing complex. That project would have qualified for planning commission to do final site plan approval on.
And why is that?
Because council had already previously approved the site, and it was within the thresholds where it did not trigger a special land use or rezoning. It wasn't a legislative item. It was strictly a site plan review item, and they did not require any waivers or variances. So that same design was previously approved by council for 20 or 30 units. They came later as an additional amendment to add one four-unit townhouse building to the rear of their property with the same design that was previously approved by council. It was a site plan approved, permitted use, so it would not have triggered coming to city council. It's just an example of projects that are pretty straightforward, that meet all the requirements of the ordinance, that require no waivers, that are permitted by right, that do not require a special land use or zoning amendment. So these three projects here could have gone through a straight site plan review process at the planning commission level. And this only represents about 19% of all the site plan reviews that you've had in the past five years.
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'd like further information on some of the sections here, that maybe we can bring this before committee, the whole meeting. I'm also curious, like, within the last year, maybe two years, like, what projects that we approved would have been excluded had we approved this proposed amendment? So I'm not sure if I'm ready to make a decision tonight.
I understand that. But, again, the DPW storage building was something that you reviewed within the last six months to a year.
Right, and you don't have to give me the answer now. It's just, I'd like to review this a little bit further.
Council, do you have any other, Councilwoman Hope?
Unfortunately, I feel a little bit different on this matter because this was vetted in our legislative committee and then just prior to a meeting before here. But I hear what my colleague is saying. Unfortunately, I have confidence in approving this particular request, and so for me, I can move forward. So I just wanted to state that.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, my concern, yes. Was that, how are we gonna know?
How are we gonna know, like you said, some of the things were approved here. Okay, let's say, for instance, we just talked about the medical marijuana, I mean, not medical marijuana, just marijuana, period. Would that have been something that would not have come before us?
No, that is, any text amendment or special land use is required to come to the legislature. So that's mandated rezoning, zoning amendments, zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, rezoning, and special land uses are all required to come to city council for review and approval.
So, the meeting we just had, the planning commission said that most of, everything that does come before them, they have vetted it pretty good and know what's happening. My concern is, we don't know, how will we know what has happened regardless of it not coming to us? Let's say, for instance, you approve something, and, you know, we just kind of like aren't in the know of it. Will you send us something to say you did this? Or how does that work?
Well, as you know, currently, when there's, we are forwarding agendas of all the items that are being reviewed by our planning commission, so you have them in advance prior to them coming to city council. That would not change. Items that would still come to city council, they only would be making a recommendation on. Those items that they would have approval on would be listed separately on their agenda, on the agenda as site plan approval. I also, again, will point out that there are numerous administrative reviews that council never sees, that are done internally by the department, subject to the rules and regulations that have been adopted by city council. Your caseload would multiply 50-fold if we brought all those cases here. So, I mean, we're all professionals. I'm a certified planner. I have three certified planners on my team. We know how to read ordinances. We work with you. We're here on a regular basis, communicating with you. Nothing would change in that respect. If your, the meeting minutes and all the approvals will be, continue to be forwarded to city council, whether or not they're recommendation or final approval. So you would have all of that information continuously submitted to you immediately after the meeting in the same timely fashion that you do now. So none of that would change. There would be, all that information would be disseminated to council in your packets. You just wouldn't be acting on that one specific piece of the site plan approval. And there will be additional flexibility granted to the city planner, whether it's me, Mr. Payson, or somebody in the future, that we'd have more discretion on doing thing administratively that wouldn't even require them to go to planning commission. That would eliminate approximately 60 to 75 days in the review process. We typically can turn administrative review around in two weeks. So we're talking two weeks versus 90 days for things that are straightforward. I'm not, nobody is expecting anything that is large scale, and that's why we built in those protections. If it triggers a community impact statement, 10 acres or greater, it would still come. If it's part of a zoning amendment regarding an overlay development district, large-scale mixed-use developments, that would still come as part of, that site plan review process would still be part of that zoning amendment. And any special land uses, so whether they're gas stations, or drive-throughs, medical marijuana, or liquor sales at gas stations would continue to come. And any site plans that would be approved that were subject to special land use, similar to what you do when you grant site plan approval, subject to waivers, if those waivers or those special land uses don't get approved, then the site plan approval becomes null and void.
Thank you.
If I can, right now, anything that's passed or approved administratively, the council doesn't see because that's, so I guess there may be a concern that some of these site plans, we would never, we get the agendas. Right now, because we have to approve them, we get the minutes, we get all the recommendations. I think there's a concern that we won't know what happens with some of the site plans, and...
Well, what I'm stating through the chair is that if the planning commission approves a site plan, those meeting minutes and those approvals would be continued, continue to be sent to council as part of their meeting packet, as informational items.
Okay.
That would not change. Whether or not you're acting on that, those items would be determined on whether or not it's a special land use or rezoning, so the planning commission would only be making a recommendation on that. If they are acting on the site plan, that information would still be forwarded to you as part of your packet. So you would have that information. And myself and Mr. Payson would be available to answer any questions that you would have on that information. And as was stated earlier, too, each of our regular meetings are televised, so that information is available to the public and to yourselves, both in the written meeting minutes and on the video.
Okay. Councilwoman Hope?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so, we get the agenda, we get our minutes to see what actions did come about from the commission. But we also have the ability, when we see an item on the agenda, that we can ask you to pull it, to delay it, in case we have some questions we can come to you on if we do it beforehand. Is that true?
Well, you always have the ability to ask questions on anything that's coming through the planning commission. We also have our planning, planners' development page that shows geographically where any cases are being reviewed. It's available to the public. I know our council president has utilized that, and it has a high-level graphic overview of the site plan, landscape plan, and elevations for all the projects. I would just caution, you always have the ability to call my office or myself to ask about any, anything that's going through the process. But if you're granting the planning commission final approval, and then you're starting to ask for it to be delayed, I think that might be a concern about due process. But if you wanted to relay reasonable concerns or conditions that we would undertake as part of the review, that, I think that's an acceptable thing to have the commission review as consideration, that in this particular case, these are the things that council is looking for.
Thank you. As I stated in our previous meeting, and I'll reiterate it again here, colleagues, I think, again, this was vetted through the legislative, and unanimously we all said yes. And then, in our meeting, I don't think that there weren't many questions regarding this. So I don't, I don't know. I'm ready to support it. That's all.
Mr. Crowe, another question. So we had an item this evening, so for example, the Kia dealership, right? That would go straight through, through the planning commission. It wouldn't come to council. But we had the Grove Kosher Market. Their site plan wouldn't require it, but they needed the rezoning. So in that situation, would the council do the rezoning and the site plan?
No, in that particular case, the council would have to act on the zoning before the site plan could be considered, or the planning commission would approve the site plan conditional upon the rezoning being granted.
Okay.
So if it got to the council level, and for whatever reason, the council denied the rezoning, then any site plan approval would be null and void, because it couldn't adhere to the current zoning of vehicular parking. It's similar to the issue with the fence. The fence request was up to 10 feet. That required a waiver. You gave a conditional approval on the site plan, subject to the ZBA granting the waiver. If the ZBA does not grant that waiver, then that condition is null and void.
Got it. Okay. Council, any other?
And I appreciate all the work that your team has done in putting this together, Mr. Crowe, and also the planning commission. To my colleague, I, you know, I know the legislative committee met and discussed this, however, I don't recall ever seeing the minutes on it or the discussion. So I didn't know until today that it was approved unanimously by the whole group. And that's why it's important for these committee meetings that we share with each other the minutes, and I know you haven't met in a while, so, but... So, Mr. Crowe, you're saying, like, within the last year, the only thing that you can think of that would not have come before us is the DPW garage situation?
Well, I'll have to check the dates, but these Habitat for Humanity duplexes, because you had already approved the rezoning request, the DPW storage building, this one four-unit townhouse building, the conversion of an existing office building to medical office, and the Skills Gymnastics. Now, that might have been over a year ago. These were, these are five recent examples of things that were straight site plan approval that wouldn't have come to council, because they didn't require any rezoning, they didn't require special land use, and they didn't require any waivers.
And there was a lot of controversy over the Skills Gymnastic, if my memory was correct. In fact, wasn't it even postponed at one point?
Well, there was a lot of public outcry, I believe, quite honestly, misinformation. And I know that we had a lot of public comment on that. It wasn't a public hearing. It didn't require special land use. They met all of the site plan approval requirements. And, but I do understand that in today's social media, misinformation can easily be spread. Neighbors have a right to come out and voice their concerns under public comment, but this was not a public hearing. And I think that the postponement was a pause to make sure that proper information got out. And we do that often. And many times, when we have our discussions at the planning commission meeting, if we have a number of residents that come to either the meeting, or contact my office, or submit letters, we encourage the developer to meet with them individually to clarify those, that misinformation, so that everyone can make an informed decision.
And they still haven't built their complex? And they still haven't built their complex to date, is that correct?
Well, I, they broke ground. I see material there. The road is also under construction. I don't know what the status of it is. We can try to, can try to find that out. But they did begin work there, and I don't know what the delay has been, whether it's financial, whether it's because nine miles under construction.
Thank you.
Counselman Hoag?
Yeah, I was just gonna reiterate that what we're talking about is the Planning Commission approving items for which meets all of the zoning requirements, the ordinance, and that anything coming to council is just a part of the process. If we were to deny any of these items, we would really be setting the city up for possible lawsuits. So it's not like we can say, this particular plan cannot go through because of this or that, because it meets everything. So unless we have made a change to the ordinance or zoning, it has to be approved. And that's something that we have to educate our residents to know that. It's not just saying yes, yes, yes to everything, but our ordinance speaks to what can be done in the city and our zoning. And we are just supporting that. And this just takes away that extra step. We talked about how businesses have said that it's hard to do business with the City of Southfield, and this is one. And it's just creating a step that really, truly isn't necessary. And I know we talked about it before, where, I know here in this, this building, where we talked about it went through legislative, and it was approved unanimously. And I'm ready to move it forward.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. And I just would like to say that to the public, when we just had our meeting in the other room, a lot of the residents, no residents, were there. And I think it's important to understand that when things are approved through the Planning Commission, there are state laws and guidelines that have to be in place for them to approve what they do, and then it comes to us. We get a lot of, I say riffraff, about things that we really have no control over. Because once people do the due diligence and follow the process, it is up to us to approve that based on they have the right material in place. So in saying that, I understand, and I know that most residents won't understand, but I think they really need to educate themselves on that. We have no control over some things because there are state laws and state guidelines. And if you don't get it tonight, maybe you can read about it and go to some of the state legislature or some of those people and make some of the complaints that you're making to us. They won't have cameras, but still, you can go talk to them about some of the things that we receive a lot of, a lot of heat for that we have no control over. And the things that we do have control, like you said, the Planning Commission does do their job, and we are trusting them to do their due diligence. That's what they were put in place for, and also especially Terry. And I ask that because my main thing is, and I said this in the meeting earlier, I live here just like everybody else does. We don't want anything to happen, and these people come back and say, well, you know, you did this. This is our city. You know, how could you let this happen? So we want to, it's just guarantee and surety that things are in place and they're proper, is doing things in order. And that was my reason for the questions. I'm new, but I'm not stupid, but I want to ask questions because I want to know and be educated on things that I don't know. And having said that, I'm able to make a decision based on that. And I would trust that the Planning Commission and Mr. Crowe will continue to do their professional job to keep Southfield in the good standing that it is in. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move PZTA 24-001 zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V zoning and planning, Chapter 45 of the City of Southfield Code, amending the various articles and sections to modify the requirements and procedures for site plan review.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PZTA 24-0001, a number of different text amendments to modify the requirements and procedures for site plan review. Counsel, are there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, the next item is to introduce ordinance number, and I'm gonna ask for clarification from our city attorney and city clerk. Since ordinance number 1793 was not acted on earlier, would this not be the next ordinance number in succession?
1793.
1793. So our, through the chair, we need to introduce ordinance number 1793.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1793.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to introduce ordinance number 1793. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And this will come back for an enactment at your next regular meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, we, counsel, we have two items for discussion and/or action. Our first item is the authorization to award a bid for the library exterior improvement project. And we have our city librarian.
We're going for a multimedia approach. Earlier today, I sent the council these site plans in reference to this. Did everybody receive them?
Mm-hmm.
Good. And we're gonna put them on the screen for you as well.
Yes.
So Ms. Beal, would you like to start walking us through it?
I will do. So the item before you, on August 14th of 2023, this council approved proposal from OHM advisors for the consulting services design and the construction administration for a reading garden and front entrance plaza. That proposal encompassed design, construction administration for removal of pavers surrounding the library entrance and the path to the evergreen patio, and replacing decorative paving and furniture, both on the plaza and the reading garden. These improvements will increase safety in both of these areas as well as provide more opportunities to provide expanded programming and enjoyment by our community. Bids for this project were received on June 21st. They were received from five bidders with prices ranging from $380,561 to $698,902. The low bid was received from DMC Consultants of Detroit in the amount of $380,561. DMC appears to be functioning in a construction manager role with Santoro Services completing the majority of the work. Following the receipt of those bids, additional information was requested from DMC in order to demonstrate compliance with the minimum qualifications of this contract. 20 references were provided, 14 were able to be contacted, and all but one reference was able to attest to the satisfactory performance of DMC and Santoro Services. It is recommended that the library exterior improvements contract be awarded to DMC in the amount of $380,561. Further, it is recommended that the library have a 15% contingency. Finally, it is recommended that the contract with OHM advisors be increased by $15,000 for additional field oversight of this project, for a total of $71,140. I have broken down the costs for you. Moving on to the fiscal impact of this item, the total cost estimate is $453,56102. Back in May of 2021, the Southfield Public Library Board approved $200,000 from the Miller Trust Fund for this project. To date, $65,285 has been spent on phases one and two of this project, which were the council-approved expenditures to take out the pavers in the children's garden, to repair the evergreen patio, plantings along the west side of the building, and the design and consulting fees to OHM advisors. Funding in the amount of $134,71471 is available as the balance in the library's Miller Trust Fund and will be made available through a budget adjustment. The remaining balance of funding, in the amount of $318,84631, is available in the library building improvements account. I have included the recommendations. Does the council have questions for me?
Counselman Hoag?
Yes, so, once we, if this is approved tonight, how much is left in your building improvement account? And then what other work is needed for the library?
Oh, that's a great question. Planner Crowe might know what my final figure was that I asked for in building improvements, but it was upwards of $2 million for this year. This is one of the major projects that we wanted to accomplish in this year, were these paving projects. Other things that are left, we have some HVAC improvements that are part of it, as well as some improvements to our Wi-Fi access points. And we are developing a creativity lab and makerspace within the library.
So we should have enough to cover your building needs for this year, this fiscal year?
Yes, because this was already anticipated as a priority for us.
Okay. Then another question, a little bit off topic, but since you're here. Is there, have we ever thought about plans for like having maybe a coffee shop or something in the library?
That is a very good and timely question. The library has had a coffee shop in the past. In the past, it has had difficulty succeeding. In fact, several different people.
I didn't know what happened to it.
I, you know, it was a wonderful coffee shop. It was a beautiful area, but they couldn't make a go of it. Any of the vendors we've had who have come in have had a difficult time making a work for them. So one of the things that we did at that point is we moved the Friends of the Library's book sale up into that gorgeous area and repurposed the space for that, which has been tremendously successful for the Friends. But the reason I say it's very timely is because recently I have been approached by a vendor who's interested in bringing that question again to the library board. So stay tuned.
And I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Counselman Haynes?
I have a sort of personal question, and Terry's not here. We talked earlier outside of this spot about putting benches for the Friends in that front area. It was a, is that still gonna happen, or?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
So that's part of the plan, yeah? Because I didn't see benches on here. I just was wondering.
We do have benches, but I know that the Friends were interested in doing a memorial bench. And of course, that is definitely still in the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks. This looks great. Love the flowers.
Question? Are the, oh.
No, go ahead. Go on.
Do we, do we plan to have these completed by the, by this year? Or this is gonna be for next year?
No, when this goes through, we're looking at this project beginning at the end of August, after we finished our summer programming. It is anticipated to last for four weeks, and then the paving will be complete. That way, we've got it done before the winter, and we're ready to go in the spring.
So I'll ask the question, will, it should still look new and fresh and should not have any cracks or any issues by the spring?
Well, and I know Rhett can speak more to this, but one of the reasons we made the design choice that we made is move away from pavers. Because as you know, pavers can get damaged. They can get damaged by snow removal, just by usage. And that's why we decided to go with pavement. But it's decorative pavement. And if you see in the designs, you can see what it's gonna look like, and it's gonna keep with the look and feel of the library itself. So that's a really good question, and that's why we made the choices we did. Because in the spring, yes, we expected it to look fresh and brand new.
Okay, thank you. Counselwoman Banks?
I'm glad to see that the furniture will be made of a recycled, recyclable plastic.
Yes.
Component versus wood. It looked like, from the visuals that were sent to us, that it was wood. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Would you like wood?
All right, counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move, oh, sorry, got off my page. I move that we award the bid for the construction project to DMC Consultants Incorporated in the amount of $380,561.2 plus the 15% contingency. Funds becoming available through the library's Miller Trust Fund, and that we also approve the increase to the contract with OHM advisors for construction engineering and inspection, additional field oversight.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the authorization to award bid for the library external, exterior improvement project as presented with the dollar amounts that are listed. Any other questions?
And the increase for...
And all the increases as well, yes. And the recommended resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all, and I'd also like to thank Rhett. You all probably know Rhett very well, but he has been with this project since the very beginning. And thank you for his guidance and these gorgeous designs that OHM has given us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you played your part.
All right, next we have the Beechwoods Park authorization to retain Turner Construction for the Beechwoods Park Project Construction Management and to retain OHM advisors for contract administration and construction observation services.
Hello again. This item is going to secure authorization for us to retain Turner Construction Company for the Beechwoods Park Project Construction Management, and also to retain OHM advisors for contract administration and construction observation services. I will say that we've got some folks with us tonight from Turner Construction. Oh, hi. We've got Oscar, you moved up on us. Oscar Knotts from Turner Construction. We have Alex Serfoso?
Yeah.
All right. And Chelsea Parson. They've been part of our meetings with us as well. And then from OHM advisors, we have Rhett Grownavell. For this letter, I know we've got some council folks that haven't been part of it or have been part of some of the work towards it. So I put a little background here, and as a reminder, or as a refresher, October 23rd, '23, council adopted a resolution that allowed us to retain OHM so that we could, they could provide us professional design and engineering services for Beechwoods. Phase one, which was the schematic design, the design development, construction document phases, project bidding. And then you gave us a total amount not to exceed $412,000. Also, you gave us permission to retain Turner Construction Company for $34,075 for pre-construction services. At that time, and before I'm running into all these numbers, I forgot to introduce Nejana, who is from our department, our budget analyst, so I apologize. So back to, the total estimated cost when we brought this item to you at that time was $5.8 million. was five point eight million dollars, actually, five, five million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And then we gave you a little bit of background on what the sources were for the expenditure for the revenue for that. We're getting one point five million from Oakland County, one point five, five seven, five hundred was the use of the Parks and Recreation existing fund balance, and then two million, eight hundred thousand available for, from the capital improvement fund. Now, as we move forward to today, this proposal had elements, certain elements to it for Beechwoods. So the proposed design included the improvement to the vehicle and pedestrian circulation in the park. I know that when you come into Beechwoods, you know this as well, when you come into Beechwoods Park, we kinda have that boulevard there, and you have to turn right to go around into the, to the golf clubhouse, and then cross over and go to the shelter there. There was also not a lot of safety footpath for kids to operate, so that was an important function of this project. Also, a new parking lot added. We were going to build a pavilion up to a hundred people, we were gonna install a playground, important, add a four-season restroom, and then also construct a maintenance facility. So, we're at this point where the continuation of this project requires retaining O H M advisors and Turner Construction for services for the construction phase, as well as the adjustment of the previous estimated budget that I gave you earlier. So, we're at this point under fiscal impact. I talked earlier about the five point nine estimated. Our total finalized estimated project costs are seven million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We're gonna need to do a budget adjustment in the arena of one point eight million dollars. Where that one point eight million dollars comes from is one point four for construction costs, we've got two eleven for Turner Construction, and then two hundred and seventy-five to, as I spoke earlier, about retaining O H M. Also, part of this funding source is the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we received through HUD. Thank you very much, Fred. And so this resolution is recommending that you allow us to go forward retaining Turner and O H M, so that we can move this project forward. In the resolution, we've got the different budget adjustments that we need to go through, accepting of the grant of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars through HUD, that those monies will be dedicated to the playground portion of this project, that's at about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it almost pays for the entire playground. So, I, instead of saying to you, so what do you think, we thought that we would give a presentation, and we'll go through it quickly, but basically what it does is it shows you where we started from, so with the master plan, to some steps that we followed with the master plan, to where we are right now, and where we wanna go. So, Rhett, if we can, there you go. This is a timeline of, of Beechwoods, so as you remember, in two thousand and twenty, we did a Beechwoods master plan, and we brought that before you. And again, those master plans are information and input and connectivity to our community for what it is that they want to see in their park system, and what kind of programs and facilities they wanna see. So in two thousand and twenty, we did one specifically for Beechwoods. In two thousand and twenty-one, we did our system-wide Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that two thousand and twenty Beechwoods Park program was part of that, you adapted as part of that. In two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had an initial design, we'll talk about that, then we have our revised design, and then where we're at right now, and that's asking you if we can go forward with construction. Little bit of, of what that looked like. So the Beechwoods master plan, when we went out to the community, out to the public, did all those engagement events, we received a lot of input, and as a result of that, we worked with O H M to come up with a design for the park. We've talked about this before, for, but for some of the newer council folks, basically the southern part of the park was a more passive area, and the more active part of the park was the north part, and then closest to the recreation facility. And so this was adopted into that two thousand and twenty-one department master plan. Twenty-two, twenty-three, our initial design, if you remember, again, taking input from what that master plan told us, we designed a splash pad, restroom, and offices, we had a couple picnic shelters, parking, we had a new entrance and a maintenance garage. What we heard as a result of that is there were some concerns about the new entrance, there was definitely concerns over the splash pad impacts, and then the proximity of the activity that we had in the park to the residents around the park. That feature there is really taking a look at what our revised design, where it lays in the park. So the, the, the white dotted lines is where the splash pad was, where most of the activity was through that design. The red dotted lines now is the revised project area. As you can see, we're moving toward the north part of the park. I don't know if, Rhett, if there's some design features that you wanted to add to that. Basically, we're, we're to the north, and we're closer to the, to the activity center. And then you've got some, some distances there that we took a look at. Basically, if my eyes can tell me the truth, we've increased six hundred and thirty feet from our residence to, is that nine fifty? Yep, nine fifty, which is a fifty percent increase, so, we can move on to the next one. So here we are with this design. It's a revised design, again, taking and following our master plan for Beechwoods. We talked about an accessible playground. We have designed a, a restroom that is year-round, so it's open in the wintertime as well. Our picnic shelter is part of the, the design, and we've got a picnic shelter for about a hundred people. Everyone in this community, everyone sitting on the dice right now knows that we probably couldn't have enough picnic shelters. We have folks waiting in line, trying to, to get access to those, so it's an additional picnic shelter. We have worked tirelessly, I will tell you that, and it's not just our department, really, we've got a great team, whether it's planning, our engineers, our, our administration. We've really improved the existing entrance and the access. We really did not have safe places for kids to cross, and we do now, and we'll show you. Parking, a maintenance garage, and we've got thirty-five hundred feet of new pathway that connects the new parking lot with the, with the shelter, and then the restroom and the playground, which will be really nice. So utilizing existing entrance, lower impact for programming, and we have this, this investment further away from residents, so, wanna move that one up, and I think this is where you come in, because a little bit more.
I don't know if it'll show real well, it's not a color up rendering, but the playground active area is, is not really important for, for the public and not for council, I apologize, but it's moved up north, closer to the, the driving range, as history pointed out, that's really the activity help of the new site configuration. The maintenance garage replaces the existing one at the same location. We've eliminated the secondary point of access that was sort of countering the original design. Certainly, the playground, although, a really nice playground isn't gonna be the same level of intensity for activity that the prior portfolio keeps was. And then, we can go into detail, but the, the reconfiguration of the driveway, and a lot of pedestrian sidewalks really makes the site a lot safer for kids to be able to walk around, walk around. We've added a drop-off area for school buses to bring larger kids, and have a dedicated area for them to be able to drop off right onto the sidewalk, and into the sidewalk pedestrian car next to the sidewalk.
And the connectivity of the two, of the two parking lots. So, if you're familiar with Beechwoods, the parking lot actually will go behind Beechwoods Recreation Facility, and then will connect up to the front as well. So it'll serve as overflow parking for some of our other programs and other events that we have going on, but it is definitely designed for the investment that we're making here.
The lower right corner, or, or southeast corner is a proposed connection, as consequence, remember, with the October, like Terry mentioned, the county's leasing, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The county's leasing part of the property, and so this, this is proposed to tie into the, the passive trail network that the county intending to install. The next couple of slides are just a little bit, a little bit more detail on the, the playground, and some renderings for that. We've envisioned a, a modern, natural play equipment, it's a very inclusive play area, and by that I mean that there are rubberized play surfaces throughout, quite a bit of is rubberized on this graphic, and a couple, some of the, couple of the renderings coming up, that's a blue color, so it kinda contrasts with the, the other mulch and, and grass, landscaped areas within the playground, giving it a little bit of a, a, a natural appearance. It's not actual water, but it's intended to mimic that. There's shade seating, there's some terraced lawn seedings for kids to be able to climb up on, there's plenty of seating around the playground for parents to be able to overlook. There's, there's covered areas, it's real close proximity to the restroom, which is just to the, to the east of the playground, and the, the new picnic shelter. And here's some, just a couple of quick renderings of what the, the playground, which is really the signature part of the project, is gonna look like. There's, there's play zones for all different age groups, they're intended to be kinda separated, all of the areas designed with, with the fall zones, in case some of the taller structures, you know, kids can, can play on them safely, if they do fall off, there's, they're landing on rubberized surfaces and mulch.
If you can go back in the slide, just to point out the shade structures, we've had a lot of calls about shade for playground areas, folks that are just curious about if, if we have any playgrounds that provide shade. So, the, the shaded areas are tables underneath there too, which will, which will be kinda nice, so, yep, and we do have the three surfaces, so it's, it is the, the mulch as well, and it is the rubberized play surface, but it is artificial turf. So we've got three different surfaces there.
There's a couple of quick snapshots. We're, we're trying to keep some, some cost-conscious items in mind, but also have some, some nice-looking structures. Quick snapshot of the season, the, the four-season restroom, which I, four hundred square, six hundred square feet, about twenty-three hundred square foot picnic shelter, and a thirty-six hundred square foot maintenance garage, which, if anyone has been out there, the existing maintenance garage is well beyond its last leg, so this will provide an opportunity to get all the equipment inside, and for maintenance park staff to have facilities on-site. Last two slides are just a quick summary of, of costs, so as, as was presented, Turner Construction is proposed to act as a construction manager, the contract is being proposed as a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price, so Turner has spent the last month and a half or so going through and getting bids on all the trade packages, they presented the, the city with a, a G M P last week, this is a, a summary of that proposed breakdown, and they're here if we wanna go into any more questions. And then lastly, part of why we are, are here this evening is that we're really hoping to get council's approval on this, at this meeting. Turner is prepared to, to start, activities on the site could start as early as August sixth, and we would get much of the work done this, this fall still, while there's non-winter weather, and they've got the schedule staged such that some work can continue throughout the winter, but the goal is to have a substantial completion prior to the Memorial Day weekend of two thousand and twenty-five, would be our target for some type of a ribbon-cutting event, and then, I'm sure there'll be some punchless final completion that trickles into June, so that's a high level of the schedule.
And just for curiosity's sake, in case anybody's wondering, it is our intention, and we've been pretty much guaranteed that Beechwoods Recreation Facility will stay open throughout the extent of this project, so, great communication with Turner, and, and we've had some, some concerns and priorities about that, you know, people being able to still move on-site there, us being able to still have program opportunities throughout the year, when we know we only have so much, you know, so much parking. So, I know, as, as Rhett said, Turner is here, and they've been wonderful to work with. This has been a very large project, we appreciate your support to this, to this point. A lot of meetings, a lot of picking of, of different, different things that you wouldn't think about, whether it's handles for sinks, or whether or not it's gonna be a blower or a paper towel filler, to choosing what we wanna see, and then getting some results about dollar amounts, and being able to adjust to that, so that it, it falls into an area that we feel pretty comfortable coming before you and asking for your support. So, we can certainly take any questions, I can certainly ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes, sir, thank you, I have a few questions. Well, first question, what's this projected sustainability budget, after everything's done to maintain the park for mulch, for cleanup, for, I mean, it's, it's nice talking about building new, but having a sustainability plan, what's that look like?
Well, we're still taking care of the property right now, so we're still cutting the grass and, and, and taking care and securing it. Basically, what it takes is thirty-eight acres, and having our residents be able to use it. So, we will clean the bathrooms, facility, we work with facilities, and they clean the bathrooms as well. We will continue to cut the grass, we will still have a driving range that's right next door with a putting green that's right next to our playground area, so it will become part of our, of our maintenance. Will we have to add folks in the future? Absolutely, we, we, we need to anyway right now, so, yes, we'll need to, we'll need to add a, we'll need to add a maintenance person.
Should we be talking about what those projections are before we approve moving forward? So we have an understanding, the ongoing cost to maintain the upgrades, before we say, yay, let's go ahead and move forward, and we not have budget to support it?
Well, I, I think that if you would like something broken out as to how many hours it takes to clean a maintenance facility, or how many hours it takes to clean a shelter, we're doing that right now at, at Beechwoods, right across the parking lot. So we already have staff in there cleaning out shelters in the mornings, on the weekends, we have staff cutting the grass, we have maintenance staff going to all of our facilities to clean those bathrooms, so we are adding a shelter, we are adding a bathroom, and I would say as far as the maintenance goes on the playground, it's, it's not really high maintenance. We chose plantings, and we, well, a lot of it is rubberized surface, or it's artificial, so we looked at all the maintenance concerns, and the higher maintenance areas, and tried to make decisions that would keep those maintenance costs down. I can tell you that we need a maintenance building there, cuz we already have staff there. We have, but it really would be nice to be able to save some money, as far as our sustainability and maintenance costs, to be able to keep our equipment there, cuz right now we can't, we don't have a building that can house it. So in some respects, we'll be, we'll, we'll be adding some maintenance costs, absolutely, we already have maintenance costs there. Could probably give you some numbers on the hours that it takes, whether it's two hours every Saturday and Sunday to do that shelter, and what it looks like to be able to bring in that revenue for those shelters. Does it cover, does the revenue cover it? Yes, it covers the maintenance for that shelter, if you take it component by component. We save money by, by being able to keep our equipment there, so we're not spending the time trailering it from one park to another park to move it out there. It's less wear and tear on the equipment, and for us to be able to maintain it and have something housed there, so that we can have our staff there, that would be nice. Because not only are we taking care of Beechwoods, but Carpenter Lake is right next door. So if we provide a maintenance area where we can have equipment that allows us to save time and energy and money on gas, schlepping all of that out to the different parks, we're doing a, a good thing, so.
So that's no, you, you don't have a sustainability budget at this point?
Yeah, I think I, I answered that, no, I don't have those numbers, and we can certainly get those, those numbers for you.
Okay. The next question that I had was, based on the fiscal year ending six-thirty, Parks and Rec had a amended budget of eighteen million dollars and expenditure. Parks and Rec had an amended budget of $18 million and expenditures year to date of $7 million. Now, I'm not sure what encumbered you have, but we're talking about a, a budget amendment when we just adopted a budget less than two months ago. Did we not know what these additional costs were going to be at that time that we had, we, when you asked, you requested budget?
You want to come up?
No, we didn't know about this cost at that time. This is, these numbers we received maybe last week. Thursday last week. So we didn't know these numbers. And it's true, a lot of expenditures that you approved last year are not encumbered in, in the budget. And Financial Director knows about it and he will be dealing with the encumbrance of the expenditures.
So do we think because we exhausted 39% of last year's fiscal budget that the additional amount requested could be absorbed since traditionally Parks and Recs has been under their budgeted amount?
Definitely. We, we did not pull any money from fund balance last year. So it will be covered with the, this year we will need to take some money from fund balance. But as of today, as the numbers says of today, the year is not closed yet, 2024. But we should be bringing some money into fund balance even for 2024. So it won't be as much as we were predicting in previous year.
And not to put you too much on the struggle, when we just looked at this, what is our fund balance at this point in time?
We finish 2023, so June 30, 2023, we had about a little bit over 5.6 million in our fund balance. And we did not encumber this 1.5 million that you already approved. And so that will be taken from the fund balance. But as I just said, we will be putting money into, back into fund balance for 2024. So it won't be taking 1.5 million from the fund balance. So I think that even after we finish everything about this project, we will still have over $4 million in our fund balance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Haines?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I didn't see any receptacles, trash receptacles. Where are they located in the design? I know you will, just, was just curious, yeah. And will they be recyclable, separated type things, the new modern style? And how many, yeah, my reason for asking is because I mean, I've been to Beachwood several times and just want to have trash, you know, all over the place, just in locations where it would be accessible to children and families. Also, is the playground, what age is the playground designed for?
There's actually different play zones for three different areas. So there's a, there's like a toddler age group and then elementary school and then like upper elementary school age group.
Okay, my reason for asking.
Set up that way.
My reason for asking is because we know our teens do. They'll come and play in areas that aren't for them. So is there, like, there's no space for them, I mean, to sit or to just congregate? I mean, because they're going to come. You've got older sisters and brothers. I'm just thinking in terms of when my kids were kids, they don't want to play on the little kids' things, but they want to have somewhere to be. You know, that type of thing. Was that in part of the design?
Yeah, the, what's really nice about this particular design is it's, it's open for creative play. And it does just what you talked about. So Rhett, we, even though we went through those slides pretty quickly, it talked about the, the cement walls that are throughout the design, terrace seating. Those are things that, yeah, that, that folks can just come and hang out, like you said, whether it's an adult or whether it's an older brother or sister. But we've got, we've got traditional swings. We don't really have an age cutoff for the playground. We just want to make sure that we, we address all three age groups.
Okay, good. Is there more parking space or less parking space overall when you redesign it? Is it more or about the same?
We're increasing parking.
Okay, and what time will the park close? And will there be signage to say what time it closes?
Right, we, traditionally, we open at seven in the morning and we close at dusk. So it'll be, is the, the same throughout our park system.
Okay, and how will that be monitored?
Our parks folks, the police department.
Okay, and you'll have someone on staff the entire time or around the area?
No.
No, okay, just asking. And are there any cameras will be located anywhere?
There are cameras that will be located here, yep.
Okay, all right. So I think that's pretty much all I wanted to know. Now, you have the garden spaces. This is just, it's not like a design garden. It's just basically, so, so say like a, for instance, a butterfly garden or something like that. It wouldn't be nothing educational and then it just would be just a set like evergreens and things of that nature. I see you have multiple gardens, just be a regular design.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
It looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zorn?
I, I just want to comment to the question of sustainability. I welcome the comment, but I want to point out just a couple of things. The closing of this golf course, very difficult decision in front of city council, was about sustainability. What can we afford? I have said repeatedly, you, we've lost over a billion dollars in our tax base in 2010. And with the millage rate in Parks and Rec at 1.75 mils, that's 1.75 million less this department has had to work with. Times 14 years, that's $24 million, folks. And if anything, the last few years that what Parks and Rec has done has been repositioning your outdoor parks for use. We've had to make some tough, tough decisions with a lot less money. And I think as Director Fields has pointed out, you know, we're maintaining this piece of property today. I wish that we were going through every property from a question of sustainability because it brings back what I've said consistently. Need another five to seven million dollars a year for roads. You need another four to six million dollars a year for your facilities. The money that we spent has been leveraging other grant dollars and then is consistent with the planning. So to the question of sustainability, I think this is something I'd love to see the finance committee undertake. I mean, we've got the issue when we talk about our facilities, another, you know, four to six million dollars more a year is what we need. If you look at the total value of our assets and just divide by 40 years, you've not tackled a lot of the park replacements. Look what you've done. You've not, you know, you cleaned up Sims Park, Miller Park, Barbic Park, Beachwood. This is a huge investment. What you've done with your tennis courts, you're proving scattered throughout the city, recreation opportunities. A few years before this, we invested about $4 million into the Beachwoods Center where you have a major concentration. We know we've got a rec center. We're going to have this great outdoor amenity. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we've got to be, I applaud the question because this is a fundamental challenge we have in government with proposal A capping our growth and what happened during the Great Recession. We, you know, a billion dollars in tax base less to work with. This is just one department. The number to the library is $32 million less that they've had to work with. Now, so I think we need to take that in consideration. The community expects these things and, and deserves these things. And I think we've been very prudent where we're recommending making these expenditures and leveraging those grant dollars we can, we can find.
Councilman Haines?
So, so Mr. Zorn, I, I totally agree. That, that's why I lifted that question. You don't buy a new car.
Without being able to maintain it and ensure it.
And, and that's what I'm asking of you all, that if we're buying this new car, what's the maintenance? And can we afford it? Because it's nice to get the brand new, but if we don't maintain it, we're going to end up with another pool.
You know, we were accused of, as we were going through the Beachwood debate and the splash pad, that we were looking at selling the property, that we wanted to develop it. Well, the news is it cannot be sold. There are deed restrictions on the property. So this piece, regardless of what happens, has to be used for recreation purposes. And we've come up with a plan, you know, the safety improvements to the parking lot, the pedestrian circulation, the play equipment. It's focused on all, you know, pretty much all age groups for a family and the shelters. And I, I think we're leveraging a lot with this. And I, I think a lot of folks wanted a splash pad. Once a week, I've got someone saying, you know, what happened to the splash pad? We wanted it. And that was planned and was part of the original Beachwood master plan that had an awful lot of input, got shot down though. So.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Just to Ms. Fields and, and your team, you know, this is, it's a, it's a good plan. It's a good addition to the park now that the golf course is no longer there. You know, nature trails, improved parking circulation, safety features. You know, I, I think this is a very good improvement to the park and Recs portfolio of our over 700 acres of park land within the, within the city. So I think this is a great plan. You guys did an excellent job on this design. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we adopt a resolution that authorizes the mayor and the city clerk, with approval by the city attorney, to contract with Turner Construction Company to cover construction costs and management. And OHM advisors to provide professional services of contract administration and construction observation for the Beachwoods project, Beachwood Park projects for a total not to exceed $275,000. And that the city accepts the grant of $850,000 from the community project grant sponsored by Congresswoman Tullie.
Mr. Zorn? It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve the Beachwoods Park proposal as described in the recommended resolution. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now up to the council portion of our meeting and Councilwoman Haines?
Just wanted to say that this is Jazz and Blues at the Library Week. And I think Wednesday is going to be an excellent day. I hope it's, no rain is what, is what it says, that it will be no rain. So we're looking forward to that. In June, we had over 500 people to attend and it was a free show. And it, it again is a free show. Weather permitting, we'll come inside if, if it's not, you know, great weather. And just want to remind you that we do at the Friends Take Donations. The Friends, it, it helps to support the, the musicians. Check the website. I won't tell you who's coming, but it's going to be a great band. Bring your lawn chairs and if you've got some dancing shoes, you're going to come and swing out and have some good, have a good time and support the friends and support the library. The library's mission, of course, is to help people succeed and, and Friends, that, our mission is to help the library succeed. So look forward to you all coming out and bring your friends and let everybody know about it. Thank you and have a great rest of the week and peace.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Counsel, this evening we met with the Planning Commission and I thought it was a, a good meeting. Before we adjourned, one of the Planning Commissioners, Mr. Martin, had asked if we could consider meeting again as the Planning Commissioners didn't have an opportunity to, I guess, you know, ask us questions. So I don't know if there's a special meeting that we can consider. I'm not asking for it right now, but, and not have it in conjunction with one of our regular meetings. In the past, we've met with them for one hour and we felt rushed. Tonight it was two hours and we still didn't get everything accomplished because we had our meeting. So I'd like for us to consider scheduling a meeting with them outside of our regular council meeting agenda. So if you could just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Yes, the Boards and Commissions Subcommittee. We're seeking applicants from residents and from corporate citizens to apply for various boards and commissions. This past Sunday, the committee, which includes Chair Brightwell, Councilwoman Haines and myself, we attended a service at our New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. And we were well received. We had many folk who expressed interest, took applications. So we'd like to thank Reverend Chapman and his congregation for allowing us to participate. And we're looking to continue recruiting, soliciting, whatever you want to call it, to other organizations and faith-based institutions to seek additional residents and/or corporate citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you. Over the past couple of weeks, just over a week, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the trash pickup where the trash service company went through an area, but they just missed people. And so I got a lot of calls. And so if our residents could just be patient with us, but to the administration, maybe at our next call, if we can have the representatives from the company to come in to hear some of these complaints. But, but to the residents, what I also noticed, because when I started getting those calls, I actually drove around the city and I just saw, just, just about everywhere, just a house missing here, a house missing there, and it just was odd. Why would they, there was no rhyme or reason why, you know, houses were skipped, you know? Initially, I thought it was because of what was placed out or you thought maybe the people placed their trash out too late. And I actually talked to people and they said, no, I, it, it was out before. They just skipped me. So that's concerning because it doesn't make sense. But what I also noticed was that residents were just throwing the trash out. And it, it just makes the city looks horrible. You know, we have to make sure that we utilize our trash bags, seal them up. Don't just assume that it's closed because the wind will not get over. And it just, you know, I just saw a lot. And, you know, we have to take pride in our, our areas and make sure that we are securing our trash and making sure that, get it out there in time so that it can get picked up. But, you know, I saw those two things going on where certain homes were just skipped, but then other people just threw the trash out. They just didn't even use trash bags, just threw it in there. And as I guess they put the trash in the truck, it just went everywhere and it was horrible. So if we could just be mindful of that. But like I said, to the next call, if we can have the organization representatives come in and let's know what happened, why, because there was a lot of people skipped. And lastly, I'd just say that we pray for our country, especially over the, the incident that happened over the weekend. Thankfully, former President Trump didn't lose his life. And regardless of where you stand across each other, the aisle, violence just shouldn't happen, whether on paper and in person. We don't need the negativity in this world today. A lot of times people get up here and they talk about mental health and all that. Mental health starts with a lot of this bullying that goes on and it needs to just stop. Fight the issue and quit fighting the people. Thank you.
Just a reminder that in the summertime, there's lots of children playing, people walking. Some neighborhoods have sidewalks, some don't. It shouldn't matter, but please be cautious when you're driving. Someone sent me a video today in front of their home that their home security camera captured an accident right in front of their house because somebody just ran right through a stop sign. Or at least that's what it appears. I don't want to make any judgments, but then, then they got hit by an oncoming car. And unfortunately, this is an area I've worked with the police department. We've, we've tried to make this intersection as safe as possible by adding some additional reflectors on the stop signs, adding signs that say, you know, the cross traffic does not stop because some people thought it was a four-way stop sign. Unfortunately, you know, it just continues to, to be a problem. So please be cautious. I know I've gotten, this last week, at least four other people in different neighborhoods who are looking for speed bumps or other type of traffic calming measures. I did speak with our city engineer. They're putting the final touches. And as soon as that is available, they will be on the website. We will be all, well, we, the council will be notified so we can help spread the word once that application pro- so we can help spread the word once that, um, application process becomes available. So please be cautious, there's kids out, walking, playing. And, you know, we want to make sure that everyone is, is safe. Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. I, uh, do have one item that I'm requesting counsel to act on this evening pertaining to the former Michigan Inn located at 16400 J. L. Hudson's Drive. This is, uh, property is the subject of a U.S. bankruptcy sale and is in the hands of a receiver. What's that? Yeah. Uh, I'm asking this evening for authorization for the mayor and city clerk to exceed a professional service contract with ASTI Environmental Services for an amount not to exceed $16,800. Uh, Henry, uh, also to sign a contract with Henry Yacht Construction up to $125,000 and Imag Corporation in the amount of $8,200. Um, all of this is to do, uh, go in and, um, inspections on this building. We, the city will be reimbursed the $150,000 upon the sale of the bidding. As I indicated in my communication, there is a bidder, uh, who is established as the stalking horse, the minimum bid. And as the property i- is sold, will be reimbursed from the receiver. All reports will be shared with the receiver, the city and the entities, uh, uh, doing the, the stalking horse bidder.
Counsel, any, any questions? Councilwoman Hoag?
So we're, um, we're not gonna demolish the building, we're gonna keep it and they're gonna remodel it?
Well, the, the, the intention of the bidder, the low bidder, is to remodel it. If some, if another entity does come in and is a higher bidder, there's a possibility that the building could be demolished. If that is in fact the case, this information will be necessary as part of a demolition. But two, as of last week, uh, I'd been told that there was only one bidder and that was the stalking horse bid.
And then you said in case another bidder, when does it, when do we say this is it, it goes to the only bidder?
Uh, August, all bids are due by August 5th. Uh, and the bankruptcy court is scheduled to make the decision on August 12th as to who the successful bidder is.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Okay.
To the chair?
Yes.
I move that the mayor and the clerk are authorized to act related to the administrative expense for the Michigan Inn.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve the Michigan Inn Shuffa LLC administration expense as presented. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank, thank you. Mr. President, I just, a few, uh, comments that staff has asked today, sir. The southbound, uh, US 24 ramp, uh, to Telegraph will be, uh, will be closed at the westbound 696 for approximately two months. So the mixing bowl's gonna be a little bit, it's been a rough couple of years. It's about to get a little rougher, but, uh, two-month closure, southbound US 24, um, clo, being closed at westbound 696. Uh, Priority One.
Waste.
Is our, who, who is our new waste hauler? I'm, I'm sorry, were there questions on the?
No, you said Priority One, it's Priority Waste.
Oh, Pri, Priority Waste, I'm sorry. Uh, Priority Waste, our new, uh, waste hauler, um, it would, it has been a challenging two weeks. My staff, the number of calls, and it's very illogical what's happening. Uh, we are working with the company, they, they have mapping systems, uh, cameras on these trucks. It's hard to understand what's happened from a logistics standpoint with, with this mapping. Where this week, what is different this week is the old route supervisor from our former contractor is working with them and has been retained. So hopefully it, it does better. I was told today's complaints were less than what we received a week ago. Uh, but it has been real challenging. On brush pickup, council will recall that you authorized the new company to do brush pickup, CHOP. Uh, they will be starting, uh, August 1st. They are having two trucks, uh, new trucks built out and there will be two, two two-man crews out on those. We brought them in as a temporary, uh, emergency, uh, approval after the June 20th because there was just so much brush. So, uh, that was approved as an emergency. They did not have the full trucks, so they had been pulling equipment from other jobs. So I'm pointing that out, so if you've seen that equipment, that's not what will be here on August 1st. Uh, two new trucks are being outfitted for Southfield, uh, the crews. The crews did get to learn a little bit about Southfield. We had staff working very closely with, uh, with CHOP. Um, so the emergency authorization will end on July 16th. Our crews will be picking up. And my conversation with our staff today is we feel very confident that we got the bulk of that pickup. Now, it's tricky because folks will, you know, you get a couple of days off, you know, and this limb has been in your backyard. You, you know, you spend the Saturday working, you get it out to the curb and then it sits there for a while. So the brush pickup, uh, we're still in that train, uh, transition, August 1st is the new date. And our people will be starting, will be doing the pickup starting July 17th. If it gets out of hand, I'll do another emergency authorization to close that gap. Uh, so if you, if you're seeing something, let my office know, that input helps out. Um, the, uh, Carpenter Lake dedication is set for August 1st at 10:00 a.m. And you'll be receiving a, a notice. Um, and there, there is a webinar that we're doing with Centropolis on Jul, on, uh, Thursday, July 18th. It's virtual from 12:00 to noon on pitfalls of starting a business. And you can find out more information, Centropolis@ltu, you'll, you can find that. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Attorney?
Thank you, um, Mr. President, we don't have anything.
Thank you. Uh, we have one item under the clerks portion.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Madam Clerk to the Michigan Association of City Clerks Institute, March 24th through the 29th, 2024.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the travel expense report of Clerk Jackson for attending the Michigan Association of City Clerks Institute uh, in March of 2024. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Thank you and thank you for approving my, uh, travel expense report. The, uh, Clerk School Program is something very crucial that I was, uh, very fortunate to be able to attend. I just want to say right now that I just concur with so many of the remarks that, uh, uh, Councilwoman Hoag made about, um, the elections and where we are in our country right now. And we just have better ways to solve our differences and issues and to discuss what might be bothering us other than violence. And please, everybody, just try to keep a level head during these times. That's more necessary than anything. And those who have received their absentee ballots thus far, remember when sending them back, you sign your ballot and enclose it in your secrecy sleeve so it can be counted. We want, we want you to be able to vote correctly the first time. And thank you for voting. That's all for me tonight.
Do, we have garage sale week?
Oh, Garage Sale Week is, um, coming up in August. Um, I believe the first day is August the 10th. I wanted to wait because I wasn't exactly sure, because we have Garage Sale Day and then we have Garage Sale Week.
So Garage Sale Week will be August 5th through 11th.
Okay.
Um, this year where we'll, we'll be waiving fees. Um, and more information will be coming out of the clerk's office in relationship with the, uh, with community relations. And usually we list all of the homes in Southfield that are having garage sales and we put that all together, but we just, I know that you've been working with community relations.
Yes, and this is an opportunity. If you have a neighborhood association that would like to participate as a group, this would be a great time to do so. You save a lot of money on, um, permit fees and also get the advantage of extra promotion because, uh, it is a citywide event. So I'll make sure at our next meeting, I have a little, uh, more details about it because it'll be right before that. No, our next meeting is August, uh?
I, I just pulled up the email from earlier today.
Yeah.
August 5th through 11th.
Yeah, our next, uh, city council meeting is August, uh?
19th.
The 19th?
Yep.
The 19th, so we will miss, um, being able to talk about that at a meeting. So please just look on the city website and you'll be able to get more information and details about Garage Sale Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the council? If not, meeting is adjourned.